Welcome to this regular meeting of the Okamas Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school board. There are two opportunities for public comments. Citizens who wish to address agenda or non-agenda items will have an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, as well as near the end of the meeting. In-person individuals who wish to address the board must complete a blue form, located with the agendas near the room entrance and presented to the board secretary prior to the start of the agenda item. Virtual participants must submit their name and address and a message through the chat box located in Zoom's meeting controls prior to the start of the agenda item. At appropriate point in the agenda, the board president will call upon individuals who have submitted a blue card or chat message, and the individual's microphone will be unmuted for their comments. But before you do anything else, Secretary Doxy, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Tom Buffett.
Here.
Jason Burns.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh. Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Leeny Schrutha. Gillian Nguyen. And Shalane Doxy, I am here.
Everyone's here. Great. The first order of business is actually adjourning to executive session. Superintendent Hood, come on.
Yeah, we have two matters for executive session this evening, which are allowable under law for open meetings act. That's contract negotiations and a personnel matter.
Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to sections eight C of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations and a personnel matter.
Support.
Okay, and this does require, that's moved by trustee Burns and supported by trustee Doxy. And this requires a roll call vote.
Tom Buffett.
Yes.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh, Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Leeny Schrutha. Gillian Nguyen. And Shalane Doxy, I am a yes.
Okay, we are adjourned to executive session. We convene. Okay. Hey, welcome back to our regularly scheduled meeting of the board. Thank you. Thank you. So we are. Thank you so much. Thank you. Um, Secretary Doxy, could you call the role, please?
Tom Buffett.
Here.
Jason Burns.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Here.
Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Leeny Schrutha.
Here.
Gillian Nguyen.
Yeah.
And Shalane Doxy.
Okay, uh, the first order of business is a discussion move forward about the twenty-five, twenty-six budget development. Superintendent Hood, you go on a premise?
Yes, good evening, trustees and members of the community. We're very early in the season. We have Executive Director Lance here. Provide information regarding the development of our twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and some very preliminary assumptions as we have to have a balanced budget by the end of June. So Executive Director Lance.
All right, thank you. So, Sam.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't hear the instructions at the beginning, so. Um. So on February fifth, the governor released her budget, the executive budget. And so first tonight, before we jump into some of our specific budget assumptions for Okamas, gonna review with you some of the more, the highlighted sections from the governor's budget, mainly the ones that it's that are bigger of impact to Okamas. Um. First and foremost, the one that most people hear about is the foundation allowance, the per pupil foundation allowance. The budget has a current projection in there or a current proposal in a three hundred ninety-two dollar increase in per pupil, which would bring the foundation for most districts in the state of Michigan. Um, I think a couple are still out of formula from ninety-six oh eight to ten thousand dollars per pupil. The impact to Okamas of that one just by itself, not taking into consideration anything else, is about one point eight million dollars. The budget, the last two years we've received, which is counting this year, so twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five transportation funding, where the state has started providing some reimbursement for general ed transportation that was continued in the governor's budget at full levels. The school safety, mental health grant, the one, this is the grant that it was significantly reduced for the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and there was a school aid supplemental after a lot of public conversation about reducing school safety and mental health supports grant, sorry, by a very large amount. So that was brought back up to a certain level. This maintains that supplemental school aid funding level. Child nutrition continues funding for free breakfast and free lunches. And there's additional funding for GSRP. And also where they are starting a pilot program for three-year-olds, a pilot program at the state level. That doesn't mean that every district will be able to implement a pilot. They're gonna probably start with a couple small, you know, a couple districts or a couple programs across the state. And to pilot a program called Strong Beginnings, it would be separate from GSRP. But there was additional funding for GSRP as well. Again, there's many other sections in the state school aid act. These are just a few to highlight Okamas. Or I'm sorry, to highlight the ones that are more significant to Okamas. I do want to talk though a little bit more in depth about the retirement funding. And first talk about the revenue components, a couple change components for retirement revenue. Last year, there was a large, the state reduced the MEPS's rate cap, UAL rate cap, which the rate cap is what it is, the UAL, it's the unfunded actuarial liability. So it's basically what are the assets in the pension plan? For, what are the assets in that versus what are you expected to have to pay out? And really, it is underfunded at this point by over thirty billion dollars across, across the state. Um, so this is for all current retirees that are, have already retired. These are existing. So we pay only a percentage, we pay anything, or we pay, it was in twenty-three, twenty-four, in twenty-four, twenty-five, sorry, it still is at twenty point nine six. The state said, we're gonna give you some revenue equivalent to if we drop that cap, that you don't have to pay up to twenty-nine, twenty point nine six, we're gonna drop it to fifteen point two one percent. We're gonna give you the revenue equivalent of that. It's gonna be one time for twenty-four, twenty-five only, and then in twenty-five, twenty-six, the revenue goes away, and we will then see, well, our retirement rate will be reduced according to that percentage. So that is one point eight million dollar, almost one point nine million dollar decrease to our funding with this revenue section. Before we look at how these rates impact the expense side of it. So remember, we have our revenue side of the, the retirement. We get a lot of funds, some funding and retirement revenue, and then we have the expense side. There's another component, there's multiple components to what we receive, and there's one called the healthcare reimbursement. If you may have heard, this year, there is the governor, or I'm sorry, in the final budget, there is a three percent employee healthcare payment. This year, the state is saying, we're gonna reimburse districts that three percent, and you're gonna pay your employees back for whatever they've contributed. So that's being worked out this year, that's in process. Then they, that also said, next year in twenty-five, twenty-six, we're gonna, employees no longer have to pay that three percent. We will do away with this reimbursement gain that where, you know, employee pays, we reimburse you, and you pay the employees back. We're, we're just gonna, you don't have to withhold anymore from employees. Now the employer picks up that three percent, though. So it switches the cost of that to the employer's side. And the executive proposal, it says, we're gonna try to help you and pay you approximately half of what we think this is going to cost you. So that was in the governor's budget. So these two revenue, netting these two revenue, retirement revenue amounts is about one point six million dollars. So now let's look at the expense side of retirement. Because this is important. There are multiple components to the retirement rate that we have. There's the normal cost, which is, what is it cost at another year of service? So that's one component of when you retire, it's wages and years of service, things like that that they look at. How long have you been there? So this is paying for current, the normal cost, it increased one point seven two points. That is actually eighteen point eight percent. So the, the increase there is just percentage points. The next component piece is the UAL, which I just mentioned in the previous slide where they said, we're, next year, not gonna pay you the one point nine million, we're gonna reduce your retirement rate. So that's where this five point seven five percentage points is. That's the relationship to that. Then we have a healthcare component piece to the retirement rate. And remember that I said, it's now switching to the employer piece and switching three percent. Again, these rates are all actuarial rates. So in addition to switching three percent, there were some changes in the actuarial rates. So it wasn't a full three percent, it was two point five eight percent. So, in reality, our retirement is going down, not by five point seven five percentage points, but only by one point four five points, which is about five hundred thousand dollars. So on the next slide, it just, I want to summarize of the retire, the revenue in the executive budget, what would it look like if we pass as is? What would it look like if it was at fifty percent? Just to give perspective, again, we don't know what this is gonna look like. This is just to provide the board some perspective. Foundation at three ninety-two, one point eight million dollars, if that comes to fruition, if it's half that, it's about nine hundred and eight thousand. We know the, the rate cap was a one-time funding, it's gone. That one point eight million dollars is no longer in our budget. We have to remove that. The reimbursing us for three percent for approximately what it would cost to switch that healthcare, that employer portion of the healthcare rate to, to, and reimburse us about half, fifty percent of what that would cost, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars approximately for, if it passes at a hundred percent, fifty, a hundred and forty-three thousand if it passes at fifty percent. So the total revenue impact is either about two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, or at fifty percent, it's a loss of eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the state of Michigan. So when I, what I want you to be aware of, when we hear this, hey, foundation's at five figures, ten thousand dollars, and that's the thing that you're gonna see in the news, there's other components that go with it, and you have to look deeper than just the foundation level. Have to look at what is the retirement rates, what is our retirement expense doing, because those all come into play. So once we take out that retirement and add that positive change of five hundred thousand dollars, um, we're looking at about just those components, about seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollar increase, or an equivalent hundred and fifty dollars per pupil, or a loss of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, or seventy dollars equivalent, just to put it in perspective. So that is the.
And Liz, can you just talk for the community and board about that fifty percent number? Why did we put it there? Yeah.
Sure. Um, so the way the budget process goes, the governor, the executive branch, puts out their budget first in early February, which they did on February fifth. Now, the next part of the process is the House and the Senate will put out their versions of a, of a budget for next year, for twenty-five, twenty-six. So there's two more versions of a budget. And then they convene and call a revenue, not, sorry, revenue consensus, that's a separate part of the budget process, but there is and there will be another revenue consensus where all the branches get together, a House and Senate, and they say, yep, we agree at what, what we're seeing in revenues for, for for the state, you know, what we're getting in sales tax, what we're getting, that we, we agree what these revenue numbers are. But they, uh, they have a conference committee. I'm losing my train of thought on what the, the committee, but they come together as a conference committee, uh, the House, the Senate, the executive branches, they come together, and then they take all the proposals, and then they work together to come out with a final budget that is passed. We only put fifty percent in here, just to give a perspective of what it can look like. What is the difference? What can it look like? Because these will change. It's not to say our funding's at fifty percent, but it's definitely not to say our funding's gonna be at a hundred percent either. This was just a, this is the proposal. So what will happen when the House and Senate do come out? I'll put together a matrix comparing all of those together so that we can see what that is altogether. This is just to give some perspective. In terms of, now moving forward into the twenty-four, what from the twenty-four, twenty-five budget carries forward into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we have to, we have to back out anything that might have happened one time. Biggest one-time items for twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, that we won't have again, it won't recur again, is environmental remediation at Kenowa. But we have to look at the things that happened one time and back those out. Our starting point, our revised budget for twenty-four, twenty-five was one point six million dollars use of our fund balance. Uh, a new item I have that you will see in a second revision is we did get an update of what our estimate for, from the ISC for special ed revenue. The first good estimate happens at the end of January. So we were able to bump the budget up by two hundred, will be able, that you'll see another that in a subsequent budget revision. But I thought that was a significant enough number. I wanted to show it here tonight. It's a two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar increase. Now, seventy-four thousand is one time. There's a one-time increase for some Medicaid revenues from settling a couple years ago. And then there's a hundred and ninety-three thousand is ongoing. So I thought that was important that we capture that now, because it is significant. So we've come up, we will start the year twenty-four, twenty-five right now with a quasi-second revision at one point four million dollars use of fund balance. Then we take all those one-time items and back those out or add them back into the budget, because they don't continue. So they won't be a constant expense on our books. So these are items, uh, when we met back on, I believe it was February third, that we talked about, we have six hundred and twenty thousand dollars reduction in grants. We have the environmental remediation. Uh, that won't happen again, so that was a one-time use of our fund balance. We saved some money in twenty-four, twenty-five because we didn't implement an elementary textbook curriculum this year. There was, paused it for a year, and that is, uh, will be studied and Assistant Superintendent Bailey, we'll talk further about that later on in this year, before the end of the school year. We had ISD funding. Again, we had some additional funds from twenty-three, twenty-four that are one-time funds from special ed as well as Medicaid. That's a different number than what you saw, because it takes into account that seventy-six thousand dollars that, that does not repeat. So that was different than what you saw back on February third. Uh, some special ed state aid, again, timing delays, uh, and how that's paid out, changes our budget, some one-time funds. We had equipment needs this year. Our, um, some of our ability to stream our board meetings was one of the equipment items, because the older system failed. So things like that where the systems failed, we had to expend some monies. So we had some equipment needs this year that we won't have next year. We had kindergarten classroom aids that we had more than in prior years. So really, we had about four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of items that we had to add in or take out of, to, to say those were one time, they're either gonna repeat themselves or not gonna repeat, and add that to our starting point. So really, our starting point for twenty-five, twenty-six is a one point eight million dollar use of fund balance. Now we look at twenty-five, twenty-six, so that's how we're saying, okay, what's our number that we start with? It's that one point eight million. Now we gotta look at what is our, what are the new budget variables for twenty-five, twenty-six that are different than what we had in prior budgets? We have health insurance. We know six months of the sixteen percent increase for our Mesa rates was two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Um, we will, we know we will experience it in twenty-five, twenty-six. We still have to come up with an assumption, will they go up more? Because this is just July through December. What happens for January to June? So what I still have yet to build into this is that piece, an assumption for that, as well as building in the, the non-Mesa health insurance rates. So that's a good point to say, this budget's not done. There's a lot of work that still happens. It's February, or towards the end of February. There's a lot that happens and more that has to be reviewed between now and the end of, when we, the board adopts our budget. But this, these are the things we know at this time, and for board members, and to remind the existing board members, or board members that have been here a little longer, we do this type of update at every, pretty much every board meeting between now and the end of June, to update you to make sure you're aware of what's happening with the budget as we, as we know more. These are, in this slide here is what is, I'm sorry, I should have said that first, the twenty-five, twenty-six are expenditure increases. So this is the use of our funds, expenditure increases or revenue decreases. So this MEPS's cost offset, this was the revenue that is going away, one point eight million dollars. We know we have a special ed funding formula change that will impact us four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, reduce funding next year in seven hundred thousand dollars in addition to this four hundred and seventy in the year following. So we have about a one point two million dollar reduction in funding from the ISD over two years. We have a state aid section that was slowly being phased out. It was funded at, and we knew this for the last couple of years, it was phased from twenty-four, twenty-five, we received fifty percent, and next year, it's totally gone. So that's about two hundred and forty thousand dollar reduction in revenue. And just adjusting some wage positions that maybe, uh, that were part year, maybe we didn't hire somebody, we had a position open at the beginning of the year, so we saved some money because we were, we didn't hire until, let's say, November or December. So we're just increasing those, those, and adjusting those positions back to full-time in recognition that we, they were some savings with that. So all these, these items, and this is before any, any negotiations, so any, before steps, before any assumptions for any wage increases, is about two point nine million dollar reduction in, in use of funds. Next slide is what about revenue increases? And and again, we do three scenarios. We're showing three scenarios. We highlight the most likely in green, because that's what we typically end up going with. But we want to give perspective to show how it could change depending on the scenario and what the impact to the budget would be. So the foundation allowance, optimistic. We typically don't, at this point in, in the budget season, do not budget for what the executive branch puts out as their, their recommendation. That's not what it ends up as. Sometimes it's lower, sometimes it's higher. We don't know that we will adjust these numbers when we have more data points. This is only one data point that we have. So the, the budget, we set optimistic at three ninety-two, let's say fifty percent of that is the most likely at one ninety-six, almost a two hundred dollar increase and a hundred dollars for worst case. So you can see that the most likely would be at about nine hundred thousand. The MEPS's rate decrease, that one point four or five point decrease is a savings of about five hundred thousand dollars. We, if we budget for fifty percent of subsidy, uh, to, to assist us with that new added cost of that three percent of employee healthcare that's being switched, that would be a hundred and forty-three thousand, and increase in special ed state aid for the year of three sixty-six is a one point nine million dollar additional funds for the district. Again, there's a lot of work to be done at this time in the year. Yes, we are showing, you know, some of the situations, and you might say we're being very conservative. Yes, we are conservative at this point, because we have one data point to look at in terms of the state budget. Once we have the House, once we have the Senate, we will update and, and fine tune these numbers. How does this look then, when we look at our, the use of fund balance, the additions to that? So if we look at the uses of fund balance, two point nine million dollars less, loss, less, and additional increases to our fund balance of one point nine million dollars. That's a nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars use, additional use of fund balance, coupled with the one point eight million dollars where we started, is two point eight million dollars of a use of fund balance if, as of right now, which would put our fund balance down to nine point seven percent. Again, we have not negotiations is a big key item out there. In addition to, you could go to the next page up. So we have to finalize state aid. We know that. We have to do all these items. We have to finalize state aid. We have to look at health insurance. I have to make a we have to make some assumptions and estimates for that based on what we know. We have to look at enrollment. I think, um, we have to look at our staffing levels. There are some contractual requirements. So that kind of goes hands in hand with enrollment, and where are we seeing students enrolling out or not enrolling out, and it makes some assumptions for that. We have to look at negotiations. Are there grants that maybe might become available in a new state aid budget? That's primarily where we would see any additional grant options. We have to fine tune our ISD revenue for twenty-four, twenty-five. There are multiple estimates throughout the year. The next estimate would be in April, and then that should give us a really pretty good idea. So we had an update in January, which is a good estimate, a better estimate comes in April. We have community ed impact on our general fund, and I know there is be further conversation tonight about that, and any other variable sources of revenue. So these are all items that we have yet to make assumptions for and put into the budget. In terms of timelines, so for twenty-four, twenty-five, we will do a second budget revision later on in the year, probably towards the end of May. And so we're just gonna be monitoring that activity and would, and that would be for bigger items like the ISC revenue that I shared. So that would, would be coming there. So we'd do a second budget revision. We'll monitor that between now and, and May, and do the revision in May and June. In terms of twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, we had our budget work session, or sorry, the board work session on February third. In addition, Superintendent Hood and I have been reviewing with leadership and, and with the groups and meeting individually with our leadership team to, so they understand all the budget, where we are right now. And talking to them about process and timelines, we'll be doing what I'm doing right now at almost every board meeting. So that's this budget development, development and updated assumptions. We'll be doing that between now and every board meeting. We may need another budget board work session throughout this process, and that typically has happened in past years. We have to adopt a budget by the end of June, June thirtieth. So I put June ninth would be for information and, because the board has information, then action, so two board meetings. So as it stands right now, we would look at June ninth for the information and June twenty-third for adoption. Um. Superintendent Hood, do you have, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, thank you, Secretary. So all the work and, and in March, sending out a communication update. They're aware of, you know, kind of buying into our budget process. They're aware of the challenge ahead of us, but also know it's early yet in terms of the assumption and the nature of how the weather works.
Had to hit my button in, in in March. So I was just saying, again, I'll reiterate, because my mic was off, just we'll send out a community, communication in March to kind of bring everyone up to date on the latest with the budget, knowing there's still months left before June and a lot of assumptions to become realized before then.
And we'll update anything in this timeline accordingly, once we have that communication.
Great. And with that, we'll see if there's any questions from trustees. Okay, yes, trustee Burns.
So, um, at what point would we have to reconsider based on what happens in Washington? At what point would we have to start thinking about the impact on our budget here? Like, is there anything that you're looking for?
So it's my understanding, we receive the main source of revenue, well, I won't say main source, because there is some food service money that we receive. So when we say the state pay, you know, it's free breakfast, free lunch, it's a portion federal funds and state funds. So it's a combination. In terms of other federal revenue we receive, we receive about between, depending on the year, between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars in title funding. And that is not part of any executive order, that section, those air, that does not meet that. I think that in, I don't believe there's anything right now that schools need to be actively planning for. So what we would do is we would be monitoring those executive orders and things like that that come out and be relying on our, you know, our, our, our groups, like MASA and MSBO and things of that, to help put that in perspective for us. But as of right now, we've not been told that we are, you need to be really cautious about X, Y, or Z. So I'm feeling pretty good right now with where things stand.
Great. Director Lance, thank you so much for the presentation. We'll look forward to this ongoing conversation.
Thank you.
Um, at this point, I'd actually like to switch around our agenda just a little bit to allow our high school students to give their reports. Find what's going on at Okamas High School. So we have Penelope and Xavier. Find what's going on at Oakhamus High School. So we have Penelope and Xavier. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Xavier, I'm a senior.
Penelope, I'm also a senior.
So to start out the report, we're going to be going over events at the high school. So last weekend, this week are the festival for the performing arts. These are performances for adjudicators' families to earn recognition for hard work and beautiful pieces. The jazz band and jazz ensemble formed that Hazlit Jazz Night on Saturday. Sort of has its version of our winter formal, which is more casual as they have jazz music and they're also doing dance lessons during. The winter formal did indeed have much lower attendance compared to homecoming, but it was still a good time. And class officers did a great job putting it together. From prom reservations and planning have been underway for quite some time now. On Saturday, the theater department hosted the twenty-four hour plays program where students started rehearsed and performed original plays within twenty-four hours. This was a great opportunity for them and thank you to all who attended. We're looking forward to the spaghetti dinner on March seventh at OHS for the district's performing arts. Tickets will be sold at the event and it includes live music and spaghetti. The Oakhamus Fun Squad and BPA will also be holding a ping pong tournament this Fri- Friday, February twenty-fourth with free pizza. And for sports, Eastside Stars Hockey Team lost to the Capital City Team to end their season on Saturday. Boys varsity basketball put up a good fight against East Lansing for their senior night on Friday. This was also the senior night for the dance team and cheer team. So congrats to all the seniors on those teams. The boys will be entering their district tournament on Wednesday this week. Girls basketball has two games this week and then will be entering their playoffs. For OFS, the Oakhamus Fun Squad, they have intramural basketball and they hosted their fourth tournament this weekend, which seems to be growing in popularity.
Looking to community outreach at our school. Will let a personal needs drive supporting the capital area response effort. They were also able to sit in on an MSU women's basketball practice on Friday. And we're able to talk with the head coach, Robin Fralik, Fralik, about her experience as a leader afterward. So that was a great opportunity for that club. And then Oakhamus Outreach, which is our group that works with the Pearl Project in Chicago and goes on trips to support that community. Had a big sale during lunches on Friday to contribute to the Pearl Project and their spring break trip. And they raised over eight hundred dollars. They'll also be holding a bottle drive on March third through seventh. This is an annual competition among the classes and it's kind of something fun that the school looks forward to. It's pretty competitive and there are prizes. But that also just generates money for the Pearl Project and donations are open for the community as well. And the senior project has been scheduled for May twenty-first, where the senior class just distributes all over the community, making a difference. Some of us go back to our old schools. But there are a lot of different events throughout the community that we're able to participate in. The National Honor Society Annual Blood Drive is coming up on April eleventh. And Asian Culture Club was able to join Hiwata's Global Gathering Event this last week to spread love and knowledge. And they featured a fun game where kids learned to use chopsticks with fruit loops. At Atmosphere at school, there have been a lot of illnesses the last couple of weeks in general, I'd say lower attendance rates for sure. And Student Council sponsored Valentine Candygrams, which were free to just send appreciation and lollipops to anyone. So that was something nice. There was also Valentine's Day Spirit Week and an MSU versus U of M Spirit Day on Friday when they played to just sort of create fun competition in the school. Everyone wore the gear of the team that they supported. There was also a policy change recently to AP applications, which are underway for next year. The new policy is that there is one holistic application and students marked all the APs that they were interested in, that they were eligible for to apply to. Whereas previously, students apply separately to each application for every class that they're interested in. This organized kind of streamlined the process for teachers and increased efficiency for students who are applying. And yeah, that's actually all we have for you. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much. Trustees, any questions? No, fantastic. Thank you. Really appreciate your report out. Comprehensive report out and you are free to stay or you're free to go. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have our discussion about community education. With that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Hood.
Good evening, everyone. Great to see a great turnout from our community here tonight. Christina Algeria, community ed coordinators here with me this evening. And go to the next slide, please. So our goals for tonight, so our team met after the last presentation. We wanted to acknowledge the feedback we heard from our community in regards to communities' value and feelings towards especially early childhood programming and the hardship that would cause to families should that programming be discontinued in the future. Again, no decision has been made yet in regards to that, to that. But we did talk about it with the board about a month ago. So since then, we've had a lot of concern shared via public comment and via email to the board and our trustees and I have read every one of those. And we hope to incorporate some of the questions you had and patterns from feedback in the presentation tonight. So thank you for that. Our goal is to be as transparent as we can, provide data and historical overview of a snapshot from when we were last profitable in community ed. Back in, I think we picked twenty eighteen, nineteen and then current. So you can kind of see some differences there that we'll share with you here tonight. And then to get an understanding of how childcare fits into the district right now, how it might fit into the district in the future. And look at whether, what are other local schools doing, what are other private daycares doing? Because again, we heard from the community about the rarity, the scarcity of, of some of those programs and opportunities for our families. Do you want to give a little, a little snapshot of, of what our rate comparisons might look like to some school programs, other school programs and other, other private programs? And we want to be accountable to the community and board on why we are here, how we got to this moment and what we'll do to make sure that in the future, we don't end up back here with the conversations. And then finally, bringing forth more options for consideration on really, how do we sustain these programs? We know they're valued by the community and administration and teachers and staff. But we also know that every dollar that community ed is spending in the negative takes away from our K twelve programming, which are teachers and our other programs that we are required to provide from the state. So we want to find a win-win where we can provide those things and hopefully best case scenario, fund other things in K twelve and not take away from the K twelve programming. Okay, I think that, Christina.
No, I think that was good.
Okay. Next slide. So our community ad programming, so we know that, and I, and I understand as superintendent, when I'm up here talking, people say, John, you use the word valued service up there, we don't feel valued with, you know, the idea that you might do away with early childhood programming. I understand that and I acknowledge that. But it is valued by our community and as some of our speakers said before, my own children went through that program very successfully with the amazing staff that we have. But it is not something we are mandated to provide. We are mandated to provide our K twelve, we're not mandated to provide community ad programming. So we do approach, approach community ad from the position of sustainability and at least breaking even, if not making money for the district. Okay. So that sustainability is our goal here tonight. And with the budget conversation that you just heard with us, starting from a deficit, I want to make sure people are connecting the two together, that this feeds into that and that feeds into this, K limited dollars, it's the same dollars. Okay. Our infant and toddler programs, the programs with our lowest ratios have always been and will always be subsidized by other programs unless we jack those rates up so high that they're self-funded, but with the ratios the way they are, that's really not doable. Most child cares and daycares offset the cost for those more expensive programs with their other programs. And we are the same and will be the same in terms of our approach, our approach in the future. Okay. So when we brought to, sorry, I'm standing in front here, when we brought to the board is a discussion really a month ago about what is our vision for the future? Can we be everything to everyone? Maybe we can. If we can't, what do we want to look like as we kind of evolve our approach forward? Okay. And the thinking is, on one hand, certainly financial, and on the other hand, is certainly philosophical and offerings. And some of the thinking from our group was if we look at a different structure to community ed, we could get more kids into three and four, four-year-old preschool and then have more kids served there, moving up to kindergarten and then less kindergarten needs with behaviors, with academic remediation, the need for, for issues there. So that was remediation there. So that was a little bit of a district looking at, how can we better do preschool to mitigate and set our kids up for success K twelve? Okay. And those two aren't necessarily mutually exclusive. It's based on numbers of classrooms open, administrative bandwidth, and again, philosophical and financial. Okay. Next slide, please. So tonight, we're going to talk about the early childhood part of community ed. You'll see some numbers on rec and enrichment in the presentation too. And you'll see where that rec and enrichment number is. But we're really talking about this piece tonight and how that piece currently is negatively impacting our K twelve budget. Okay. So again, vision, what do we want to be looking like in the future, knowing, again, we haven't made decisions yet, we're just looking at options. Okay. Okay, what we currently offer.
Yes.
So as discussed before, we offer one year-round infant program as well as a toddler one program and toddler two program that is also year-round. We have a three-year-old full-day preschool. And then they have a before and after care that's offered at Edgewood. We also at Edgewood have GSRP programs. They are, there are three classrooms that are four-day and then there's one classroom that is five-day. At our elementary level, we have before care and after care. And we also offer before care and after care at Kinnawha.
So this isn't all the benefits or drawbacks, but wanted to hit a lot of major ones we heard from our community and, and your communication. So the benefits of the current program we provide are certainly early intervention for our youngest students and kids, infants, toddlers, setting them up for success in K twelve, the kids that go through our system. We think it sets them up great academically, behaviorally and socially. And certainly valued service, when again, we talked about scarce resources. It's valued by you, by us, for the community and, and staff looking for childcare as an additional option for childcare within the community. The challenges we've had with this is our great start to quality program rating has declined as we talked about in the last year or so with the programs. We want to get that rating back up. Staffing, trying to retain our staff and make sure we have staff members. It's been hard to, to fully staff our programs, especially as we rely on some MSU students, things of that nature. We're seeing more competition in the private sector for wages and more attendance issues, especially with some of our non-full-time staff members. Sustainability, which is again, why we're here talking, is the impact on the general fund. We want to have a positive impact or a sustainable impact, not a negative impact. And then management and administrative bandwidth. Doing, you know, a broad scope of offerings stretches us a little thinner administratively with our bandwidth as opposed to a focused number of off, offerings. Again, I'm not saying these challenges are overcomeable, they're, they're, it's just the challenges we currently have with that setup. Okay. Next, we looked at for you. What are local school districts offering? So we did some research contacting local districts to try to get an overview of what are they offering in terms of childcare offerings? And Oakhamus is on the top, you can see East Lansing just works with the city of East Lansing to provide theirs. Has it public schools, MSU Child Development Lab does their threes and fours. Holt is the only other school, local school that we could find in the area that offers the breadth of services that we offer. Has it, I believe is only a four-day program too for the MSU Child Development Lab right now, looking at going, trying to go to five days. Anything you wanted to mention about that, Christina?
No, I think it's good.
Okay. So then we did a rate comparison. What are we charging compared to local districts? And what are we charging compared to some private centers? And for the infants ones and twos, you know, from the prior slide, there wasn't a lot of comparison points with other public schools. So that's just Oakhamus and Holt. For the preschool numbers, we were looking at, I think it was five local districts, including Oakhamus, to do a comparison of our numbers. And then Christina, reach out to three private centers. And do you want to talk about why we didn't list them, please?
So a lot of the private locations do not share their rates, but they were willing to share them with us just so we could have some estimates to compare. Typically, most of their programs are similar in hours that they offer and they run similar ratios. So they are compatible in that way.
And you, you can see there's some opportunities here, some challenges here when you look at just some comparisons of what are our rates look like compared to others, private and public sector. Okay. Our rates for before and after care are, I think they're, I want to talk about that, how they're staggered a little bit. So we Yeah.
Yeah, so our before care does have a little range depending on if you are at Edgewood, if you are OPM or if you are school age. So we did put the values in for that, but we did use the range for our after care. And we will be converting our before care to be similar so that there's a consistent rate.
So you can see this and look at some of the comparisons of where we are, whether, whether we're over or under compared to some others and see some opportunity there for perhaps some tuition increases to offset, offset some challenges we currently have. Okay. Next slide. So two colors on this slide, the gray is external factors, the blue is internal factors. And that's not as clean, you can argue some of these, so just please know that. Maybe not as clean as we'd like, but I want to talk to you a little bit about how we got here. Okay. So we saw a school age before and after care enrollment decline, numbers up and down through COVID. And the before and after care school age kids numbers haven't, haven't returned to pre-COVID levels. Okay. This first box was one of the major revenue sources that offset the cost of the more expensive infant programs. Okay. So this is your kindergarten through eighth grade students that are in before and after care. We have less kids in that program. Okay. It's more, more than last year, so that's good news. So those numbers have come back up because we've done some advertising and been trying to get them up because we knew we had some grants to get us through that kind of that COVID times when people were doing other things. But it hasn't come back up to pre-COVID levels and therefore our revenues aren't as high as they used to be. Okay. So is that external? You can argue maybe a little bit of both, but we don't have as many kids in there. Grants used to sustain programming are going away. So we had, again, the grants from the state saying, we know child cares have taken a big hit and those grants are going away. So now the state's expecting us to make sure that we have good management and that we're now living in the new reality and we are sustainable in terms of our approach. And you know, we're here right now because we're not. Okay. Our staffing costs have increased about last year at this time. We did some wage studies and we really looked at and met with each, each of our community ed employees and before and after care and heard from them the struggles of what their current wage was in terms of not keeping up with other opportunities in the private sector. So if we wanted to keep them employed here, we really had to do something with our wages for them. It was the right thing to do, to keep the amazing staff members that many of you have talked about. But those were significant adjustments to their hourly rates that kept those staff members here, but increased our expenses. Okay. And the reason we call that an external factor is because again, we're looking at what is, certainly we control that internally by raising the rates, but we looked at what are other jobs paying in the market? We'd often hear, you know, I can, I'm working with kids, I could go work, you know, somewhere else in the community and make, make many more dollars. Work retail, work in fast food, work in, and I could make more than I could make working in childcare here and I'm working with kids. So John, please make that adjustment and that was the right thing to do and we did it. So John, please make that adjustment and that was the right thing to do and we did it. Change in structure and management of programs, you're going to see since twenty eighteen. Our three and four-year-old programs have massively changed structure and we've added more GSRP rooms. Purposefully to allow more opportunity for free childcare for families and free preschool for families. And that has changed drastically. So it's really hard for us to give you a three and four-year-old comparison. We're going to be able to give you before and after care and toddler infants and ones and twos. But the three and four, a lot of changes going on there. Christina has only been in her position. Six months, so all of this why we are here. Is not a reflection of her management. She's done an outstanding job in a very short time. And hasn't really had her opportunity to put her. Her, work her magic on the why we are here, okay? She kind of arrived to this issue that we were trying to work through with prior management and did not work through successfully with. Classroom capacity, so our classroom maximums were not met, okay? You've all talked about there being open seats, so there's two reasons there's open seats. One is when I was looking at having a conversation with the board, I said. Don't fill any spots right now while we have this conversation. The last thing I'd want to do is a parent that's been on a waiting list, bring them here. And then have this conversation and then say to me, John. We came and accepted a position, now we're off all the other waiting lists and. Now you're talking about the future of the program, like that seems like a cruel thing to do, so we did put a hold on. Those enrollments while we were doing this process, but even prior to that, I can tell you. That classroom maximums were not met and not rolled up efficiently as kids aged into different classrooms, okay? Waitlist not effectively utilized and. Christina will tell you the waitlists are deep. Again, we don't know how many people have already found other, other. Other places for their kids, but. She has great confidence that if I say fill the classrooms, that we could probably fill all of our classrooms, okay? So that has not happened because waitlists were not efficiently utilized, okay? And then two other things, our tuition rates, we've increased tuition rates over the years. Since twenty eighteen, different rates for different programs, so it's hard to give you an average. Of what those are, but those combined with these other issues, staffing costs and fewer kids. Haven't kept up with making the pro-program sustainable, okay? So you know, more expensive and not as many, not as many revenues, expenses. Being out of whack, we have an issue we have to solve, okay? And we worked on trying to address and solve this issue starting about a year ago, but it did not happen successfully, which is why we are here. And then also that great start to quality rating decline. We want to offer, as our staff members who work hard, who want to offer a quality program to our community. And we saw that rating decline occur and we want to get that back up to four or five stars. So again, talking about. Capacity of management, training staff. Staffing issues, where do we want to put our energy, get the most bang for the buck and offer quality, high-quality programming for our community? Anything to add?
So in the past week and a half, we have. Reached out to everyone on our waitlist to get a better sense of who is actually still interested, so. As of today, we do have an up-to-date waitlist that we'll be able to move from. And are confident to be able to fill those spots and then just so you guys know, we do have an upcoming professional development day on the twenty-eighth. And part of that will be used to. For some of the staff who are not fully curriculum trained to finish up and work on that, so we are utilizing those days.
So some of the things within there too, I just want to mention in my notes that we've strategies that. We have tried and I'm not saying tried successfully were. To increase enrollment to maximum ratios, which we talked about, increase tuition, we talked about. Raising staff pay, which we talked about restructuring discounts for teachers and staff, we didn't talk about, that's something that we're doing. Advertising slots more efficiently and effectively. Expanding the GSRP program, which we've done some of. Changing the criteria for when kids age up in classrooms. Because that deals directly with staffing issues and then I talked about we, that we froze enrollment during this evaluation, so there's that too, okay? Okay. So changes we're already making that, and that are in, in the works. Is increased oversight by leadership, so as superintendent, I'm obviously ultimately responsible for all this. So Christine and I have been working very closely with Executive Director Lance. With Director Sli and others in regards to. How and why are we here? What are we going to do to make sure it doesn't happen again? And then again, very impressed with Christina and her leadership. So new leadership overseeing this. Problem and solution. Increased advertising of program openings, that's something we certainly can do. That did, was directed and did start last year and did result in our BNA numbers going up some. So we're not at our lows, the numbers have been a little bit up and down. More BNA numbers we have, the more we're going to be able to offset costs in those, in those lower. Ratio programs, okay? Utilize waitlists more effectively, we've talked about that. Monitor tuition increases to make sure we're meeting the financial need. Enroll classrooms to capacity, we used to set like an Okamas capacity and it wasn't the same as the state capacity and we. Directed to be moved to the state capacity to make sure our ratios are in line with the state ratios, so that has also happened. And increasing transparency and parent engagement, so you'll see some ideas about that later. About how we're going to keep you all in the loop about how successful these sustainability options are. Or not successful they are and then what next steps might be, okay? Anything you want to add there?
So one of the lower ratios that we have was our infant room, we had a capacity of nine and. Our goal is to move that back up to twelve and then our GSRP is capped at twenty, so we will keep that twenty there. But we can have increased numbers in our three-year-old classroom.
So a couple of snapshots, twenty eighteen nineteen. Sustainable and you'll see in the budget slide, I think community ed. Through childcare contributed, contributed around three hundred thousand dollars to the K twelve programming. Right now, we're costing about three or four hundred thousand dollars, so there was like a six hundred. Thousand-dollar swing or more, a little more that we wanted to at least be break even on. And you can see our enrollments in the state ratios and capacities back then and now. So six, seven and six. Eleven and ten and the toddlers and elevens and the toddlers and twos. In our capacity, so we got room to fill, right? Some spots there which will certainly help. This is perhaps more telling and this is again. The program offsets the cost of the ratios, the smaller ratios up here. In twenty eighteen nineteen, the number of average kids on all sites, one seventy-six to two seventy-two. And down to one forty-eight and two forty-five, so you're down. You know, fifty, fifty-five kids from when the program was sustainable. Now, the good news is those numbers were even lower a year ago, so they're coming up a little bit. Because some of the strategies that we have in place, but they haven't come up enough to offset our costs, okay?
So currently with incoming children that we already had ready to go. Our infant room has one pending to start, our one-year-old room has one pending. Our two-year-old has one pending and our three-year-old has three offers, knowing that we're keeping that program.
And this next slide is where I said it's really hard for us to compare apples to apples. Truly not trying to hide anything here, it was hard for our team to go. Like what was the program back in twenty eighteen nineteen and what is the program now? So Christina, I'll let you explain this one. We struggled with how to do a visual on this one, so.
So as you can see, our, our three and four-year-olds look different in two thousand eighteen, we had half-day programs. We had three half-day blended tuition and GSRP programs. That was taught by two teachers and then that second teacher also taught a three-year-old afternoon. I think three-year-old morning program and the, the afternoon was the blended GSRP. So that was one of our options over at Edgewood. We also had the full-day three-year-old program at that time. As well as OPM hosting the PPK program, what that looks like now and then is that. We have three and four-year-olds that are dispersed into four AM classrooms and then in the afternoon. Our. Three and four-year-olds can then go to the enrichment classroom. That we offer in the afternoon and then the kindergarten students disperse into three out of those four classrooms to continue their kindergarten day.
I think you made a visual, right, of those, was that, was that the new visual you had?
We had the.
The current one, so we'll hand this out, it's also been attached to the workbook if people want to see it in other resources. So I'm getting some feedback from folks that said a. A visual, a different type of visual would be helpful, so we'll pass that out to you right now, okay? All right, Katie, you want to go to the next slide? So financial, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this first slide because again. Executive Director Lance just gave you the update on the district's budget, okay? This slide, you say the numbers aren't the same to what she just presented, you're correct. These are the numbers from the February fourth board meeting, third board meeting. Aren't updated to the current numbers that you saw this evening, but. Sense right now is the same, we're deficit spending, we want to make sure that we're being. Intentional about closing the gap in, in that deficit and. Community ed is a piece of that deficit. So again, how do we keep this program sustainable so it's not costing money from our K twelve coffers to keep this program afloat? Okay, because what that does is it's less money to spend on teachers, K twelve. And support staff and all the things K twelve and none of us want that, we want to see if there's a both hand to be found here, okay? Next slide. So I'll walk you through this one. I feel like I need to like, I feel like Bob Barker when I'm doing this with a thing, so. You'll notice the top three are red both years. This is what I'm talking about when I say. That are, are lower ratio programs or maybe a tighter ratio, the one to three is one to four ratios, costs more and always will, okay? So you can see infant toddlers and ones and twos in twenty eighteen nineteen, those ran a deficit. There's continuing to run a deficit even though it's bigger right now. But that deficit was offset by the most part in. Or an aftercare program, six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars brought in, okay? So we didn't care so much about that being a deficit because. We could pay for it with other programs. I showed you the fifty-five left kids we have, now that number's down to three twenty-three. These deficits are bigger, why are they bigger, John? We increased our wages for our staff. Okay? Twenty eighteen to now, staff wages have increased, okay? That's why. So this one here with Montessori enrichment, you've seen it's gone from sixty-four thousand to twenty thousand twelve. And there's an asterisk there, the reason there's an asterisk there is if we look at turning that into a part-time GSRP classroom. That that will. Should get that close to break even. Because GSRP is money in, money out, we don't make money off of it, we don't lose money off of it, it's kind of a. A break even approach to providing classrooms, okay? You'll see. Facility rentals and different youth sports, the facility rentals issue becomes one of. We're running fewer facilities right now because of the constructions we have. So the Chiploa Gym is offline. So we, we were planning for a little less revenue with facility rentals. That should go back up once our construction is done, maybe even be enhanced once our construction is done. We went from a. Three hundred eighty-six, six thousand dollars positive to a. Four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars negative, which was the impetus for, we got to do something about this, okay? Notes here, expenditures total include direct program costs. There's also indirect program costs for. Running these programs in terms of accounting payroll, human resources, custodial maintenance, administrative oversight, so. Indirect costs are not accounted for within the community ad budget. And those are some examples of those, so there's other costs to running this program besides the ones you see here, okay? Anything I missed on that? Okay. Oh, to which end, what did we charge back in twenty eighteen, what did we charge now? So you can see they've all gone up. Two fifty to three thirty-five, two thirty-nine to three twenty, we've all gone up. But again, not sustainable, not gone up enough, or we don't have enough kids in our BNA program to support it, okay? Again, you had ranges now here for before and after care and that's one of Christina's goals is to get. This fee system a little more streamlined, okay, because different rates for different programs confusing for parents. Harder for us to account too, okay? So again, showing you profitable to not profitable again, okay? So some options for sustainability. So the first thing I want to reiterate is. We've heard you in the feedback on valuing the program. We've heard parents and community members come up here and say, you know, we're willing to pay more, okay? So we're going to show you a few. Work samples of in order, some assumptions we're going to make in terms of enrollment. And then what that looks like to get us to sustainability. These, I think, options, one, to get us to about, was break even, correct? For all these, so get us to making a lot of money, but they get us kind of breaking even, okay? Which is again. Meets our goal of sustainability, we don't have to make three hundred thousand dollars through this, be nice if we would. But we don't want to lose four hundred thousand, okay? So option one. And please know, really, really hard to describe these and a title that is wholly accurate. So first thing I called option one was maintain programming, but. There are a few small changes that if I say maintain programming, some of you say you're not being honest, John, so. Maintaining most programming is what we call option one. And that's sharing the tuition increases more broadly across the program, so those infants, ones and twos don't get a. Huge disproportionate bill, we know that. Those programs are more expensive and you could see in the private childcare that people do pay a little bit more for those, but we didn't. This option is like, let's try to spread the wealth with that approach to make it maybe more affordable, more palatable all families, okay? This assumption means. We are at seventy-five percent capacity in Edgewood, we think we can do better. But we wanted to make a reasonable assumption to sustainability. So if I put a hundred percent up there, again, I don't know if I'm making a reasonable. What if we're not at a hundred percent now, we're in an issue again, so. In talking with Christina, we think seventy-five percent is conservative, we think we can do better than that, okay? This maintains tuition-based programs, school age before aftercare enrollment, okay? So this maintains our. Babies ones and twos, okay? Maintain most program target tuition increases means. The programs with the lower ratios, the one to threes, one to fours are going to have more of the tuition increase than the others. There's still going to be increases everywhere, but they're going to have more of that burden, okay? And this again, same assumptions and it keeps your, your babies ones and twos, okay? Option three was what's the idea we floated across to the board for some feedback a month ago? Say we can instantly be solvent if we've sunset the. Babies ones and twos, because we know that's. Where a lot of the expenses are coming from because of the nature of the program. And focusing on increasing preschool offerings, more three and four-year-olds feeding up into our system. Hopefully less behaviors, better academics, less interventions needed. That's going to serve our K twelve better, okay, so that's the one we kind of already talked about, that you've provided the feedback on. And then four is, let's just delay this till we get through our strategic planning. And see what's where our community and board went ahead, okay? That comes with a cost of twenty thousand dollars a month because we haven't. Kind of kicking the can down the road in my opinion and not doing anything either way. To be solvent in the program is just kind of. Spending money and kicking the can down the road when we're going to have to figure out one of these options anyways, okay? So this could still occur, but shouldn't occur in isolation of, of one of the other options, right? Next slide. Yes, go ahead Christina.
So both of those first and second options, we did hear you and we also were talking about maintaining. Our three and fours over at OPM for the afternoon, so our thought process was to instead of having. One full day for your, or one afternoon GSRP for four-year-olds, it would be a blended class that would offer. Three and four-year-olds to be able to sustain our parents who do need that full daycare.
All right, so option one. And again, when I present options one and two. For our trustees, what I want you to know is these are just some options with some numbers, we had to start somewhere. I don't need the board to decide. I don't need the board to decide to set the actual rates. That's something administration can do. But philosophically is more what we're looking at here is, you know, sharing or coming up with, hey, guys, do a hybrid and spread the cost a little bit differently. If we did a twenty percent tuition increase for everyone, we had seventy five percent of our rooms filled, we'd be at about break even. So just across the board, twenty percent increase in tuition or break even can maintain those programs. Okay. We're looking at restructuring that OPM enrichment to the GSRP plan. That was that asterisk I talked to you about with that twenty thousand dollar deficit that would go away if that becomes a GSRP. OPM preschoolers don't have currently before care. And we didn't have enough OPM preschoolers to have aftercare be sustainable because the numbers were so low. So preschool aftercare has to be its own section because of licensing, they can't go in with school age kids. It's my understanding. So you have to dedicate a full staff member to that, dedicating a full staff member to that with enrollment we had was not feasible because enrollment numbers are very low. Okay.
Yeah, if we did that, we'd have to bring down our ratios.
And this is maintaining that capacity in all classrooms, being at about seventy five percent tuition-based programs. And we're assuming with this that our before and aftercare numbers stay the same. Okay. We're hoping to get more in before and aftercare because then now we're not just sustainable, now we're making profits. But our assumption here is kind of we think pretty obtainable seventy five percent at Edgewood and keep your before and aftercare numbers the same. When we know we did advertising and before and aftercare numbers went up in the last year. Okay. Next slide, please. So this is looking at higher tuition increases for infants, toddlers. Hey, we're going to have you pay forty percent more than you're currently paying. And lower tuition increases for three-year-olds before and aftercare, all ages thirty, ten percent. Okay. That's another path to sustainability going. We're going to have you pay more for the, for the infants and toddlers because of the ratios. We still need to raise the other rates because there's an opportunity there to offset, can't offset all the costs here. So it's more of a targeted increase, but everybody's going to get some increase. Okay. And again, the same, same assumptions. Notice we put a July first effective date on these. Our team talked long and hard about again, what we've heard from parents is we need time to plan. If we need to find new, new childcare, number one. Number two, if we're going to change the rates, do we just change those overnight? We could. Or do we typically publish a rate change now so people can make other decisions? And then we do a rate change July first. It's been the past practice. So Christina, Liz and I talked long and hard about that. We didn't want to just change the rates two weeks from now, knowing cost of eggs, cost of everything is more. So trying to really use a reasoned approach to sustainability, okay, knowing that's going to cost the district some money, but again, trying to be good stewards to you, our customers as well. Okay. So there's this slide. Next slide. What are the benefits of this? So it preserves the programs that we value. We do value the infants, toddlers, ones, two-years-old. We value that. The question is, can we afford it? Okay, and how do we afford it? So preserves those programs and the benefits of those programs, retains our staffing in their current positions. And we can enroll more students in those rooms because we know we haven't met the maximums or, or the waitlist, right? Challenges, we have to meet that seventy five percent or this isn't going to work. We dip below that seventy five percent, we got a problem. Okay. That also means being, B and A care has got to stay the same. We start losing a lot of B and A care kids. We're not going to be able to offset the cost of those other programs regardless. That increased tuition is not taken lightly by us in this current economy. Okay. But again, for sustainability, there's no other way to do it. You need more kids. And those kids got to bring in more money, okay, to pay for the program. Reliance on other programs to offset the cost, that's going to be true whenever we offer those programs as I shared with you earlier. It does change our expansion opportunities. We still have three or four open classrooms there that we could add additional GSRP, three and four-year-olds, just not as many perhaps. So there's still, again, as I said, there's some gray here with kind of going down to the rabbit hole of all these options. We're not saying you couldn't still expand with these. It's just changes number of classrooms that could be open and what you might do with those rooms. And then district resources stretch thin. Again, just the breadth of services we're offering. Is, is greater. And again, that can be an opportunity, a challenge, could also be a success story. So there we go for that. Anything you want to add there? And this was the slide we showed before. If we don't do infant toddlers, ones and twos, that full day programming, this is what we could potentially offer more GSRP, more preschool, again philosophically to feed our K twelve programming with more kids in preschool sooner. Okay. And then not doing as, as wide a breadth of services and less breadth of services. Benefits, it reduces the strain on our budget pretty quickly because we're getting rid of those really expensive programs because B and A care can't offset that. And it allows us to focus on school age kids and preschool in our K twelve programming. But it removes that valued infant toddler program that you told us about and that we know, again, my kids went through that program. Could lose staff. You know, they're losing the jobs they've done for X number of years, might not want to be in a GSRP room. They're going to say thanks, John, and find something else to do. And we know we value those relationships. GSRP, there's a lot of GSRP being flooded onto the market. Can we fill all those rooms? We don't know. So maybe there's a GSRP oversaturation that we wanted, that we heard from you that wanted to make sure we captured a nest. Supply and demand, right? If there's too much supply and not enough demand, will we be able to do that anyways? We don't know. Okay, and we heard that from you. Okay. They talk about if we don't capture kids early, that they may not flow up into our K twelve program could be a challenge. And then certainly the challenges of our families are saying, gosh, John, like four months lead time isn't enough. We're talking, we need six to nine months to get it, to get, to find childcare. Okay, so we heard you on that. Okay. As well. And then option four is delay the decision till strategic planning. And you can see I've written down there, this recommendation is really something we could do. But with the budget, the way it's looking right now, just to say twenty thousand dollars a month and make the decision by June doesn't seem to move the bar much. I don't know that you want to wait that long to be in limbo. I know I don't want to wait that long. And I won't speak for our board, but we'd like to bring some clarity to this soon for everyone. Okay. We could look at strategic planning and creating a vision for the future and how do we get there? But we could also do that with options one, two, or three. Okay. So this is a weekly tuition rate summary by option. And this shows you for option one and option two and option three, what would our rate changes look like in your new monthly, you know, weekly? These are these weekly rates. These are weekly rates, right? So I grab this again. So you can see twenty four, twenty five, what it costs. Option one was at twenty percent across the board. What would the new cost be? I don't know if you guys can see that, four oh two, three eighty four, three eighty four, two twenty eight, one forty two. And the range forty two to sixty six and eighty four to ninety. Okay. So that's option one. With that, spread the cost across. Option two, if you did forty percent, thirty percent and ten percent kind of targeted what the new rates would be. Okay. And then option three, you're still going to need a tuition increase to make sure option three sustainable and what, and what those might be. Okay. So other considerations, because there's some other things here that can ultimately revenue enhancements. So Do you want to talk about this one? So I can take a quick breather.
So with this, no matter what, if we keep all of our programming, we can still expand another three-year-old classroom or two as well as another two to three GSRP classrooms. We do have four rooms that will be available next year, keeping all of our current programming that would be available to us at Edgewood.
So that's why the blue says can be implemented to a degree, to a different degree regardless of the option you pick, because we have some rooms open. So we can do more of those. If there's more rooms open, fewer of those. There's fewer rooms open. Again, the pros and cons of can you actually fill those rooms if there's GSRP surplus of demand? Okay. Great. So we had someone, a renter, reach out to us who we may or may not be interested in that said, we would love to rent two rooms to provide a community childcare-based service. And they'd bring staffing, help offset other costs for us. So there could be a opportunity there to continue to offer our programs and take two of the empty rooms and rent them out. This is hot off the press within the last week, so we'll certainly vet that, but that could be a could be a win-win for us. Okay. I haven't mentioned the name because I don't know that that's, it's public yet, but we will let you know if we pursue that. And it seems feasible what that group is. But it's a school-based, school-based group to service same-age kids. So, yeah. So again, I just want to bring back to, we talk a lot about finances here and I know how that makes our employees feel. I know how that makes our parents and kids feel about being a number, right? But I'm ultimately responsible for making sure that we are sustainable in this program and we're not taking away from the K twelve mission of the district. So there's both a philosophical approach to this and the financial approach and can we find a blending and a win-win? Sure, that is kind of our opportunity tonight. Okay. So again, the options for moving forward. You'll see we put July first effective dates in options one and option two. We added a no sooner than August fifteenth. If we go with option three, we heard you don't have enough time. If you guys go with option three, it's a real problem. It's creating stress on our families, on our new moms. We, none of us want that. I don't want that for you. Okay. But again, every month, we don't right-size this. It's costing us money, which I'm accountable to the board and community for. So I gotta figure this out. Okay. And option four doesn't do anything besides twenty thousand dollars a month and kick the can down the road. Okay. So how are we going to know? Whatever option we choose, John, how are we going to know this option is sustainable? So this is our promise to the board and to you. Is we will do a quarterly update for everyone. And not just at a board meeting. Christine and I have talked about coming to Edgewood and doing an Edgewood family meeting and sharing with you our current numbers, our current revenue spreadsheets, current balance sheets. So you know, and you kind of get that temperature throughout the year of are the strategies and assumptions that these options are based on actually working? Are we moving towards sustainability or away from sustainability? We don't know yet. So we do a check-in with everyone in June, in September, in January, and in April. The reason that says tentative is we may want to slide that a little bit as we're talking with the board about budget conversations. Or when Christina's enrolling kids, does, do these make sense for the enrollment, high enrollment times? Because we'd hate to give you a, you know, a June update when August, we're doing enrollments and June tends to, tends to dip because of summer. So we want to make sure we're transparent and thinking that through. That's our best thinking at the time. We'll repeat the tuition study annually in the spring. So you can see what our other schools cost, whatever our privates cost, what are we costing? So everyone can see where we're over, where we're under there. And then in spring, we'll set the rates for the next year with that August or July first tuition rate deadline. Okay. And then we'll be doing reporting out to the board separate from our Edgewood families. But again, you're welcome to come in terms of here's the strategy, here's how effective it's been or ineffective it's been. So it's been effective. It's not effective, not effective. What are we going to try to do about it? Come back in three months and report out again. Okay. Sharing the audit findings with the finances. So you said seventy five percent of the kids, did you hit seventy five percent or more? You said B and A care, does they sustain? Is it sustained? It's not. What are you doing about it? So that'll be shared. And then we may come up with additional steps. Hey, we didn't think about this, but we want to try this to be a revenue enhancement. We want to try that. So just because we have the strategies here, it doesn't mean it's all inclusive and we can't learn and try new things. Okay. And then if we, if we have a bunch of check-ins and things aren't particularly going well, like we're not trending to a sustainable path. Families will know because we've been meeting with you, sending out reports, meeting with the board, and then we could forecast for you what our future steps are and try to give you, we thought, a six-month timeline if, if we had to say we have to sunset programs that we try to do that. The issue with sunsetting programs that we talked about is once you decide to sunset a program, the program itself will inherently become more expensive and unsustainable. Because you'll have parents get off the waiting list. So now your ratios get even less. So you won't, you'll be less full. And then who's to say our staff is going to stick around, right? If they know their jobs are going away, they're going to, they might be like, thanks, but I got another job. Then the program is automatically going to end. So we talked about that prior and didn't think that was terribly feasible for, from the staffing perspective or from the parent perspective to say, you said the program is going to be here for X months. Sorry, we used to be a one to four ratio. Now you're the only kid left. Now it's a one-to-one ratio. That's not a winner for us or the staff member left because they got a new job. So those are all things we've considered behind the scenes and just they're problematic because they just you can't plan for all those contingencies. Okay. So for one and two, that plan for sustainability will work. Yep. Okay, so then get to what is our administrative recommendation for the board to consider? So a month ago, we came and we talked about, you know, we recognize there's a negative community impact to option three. Being stretched thin spread from pre-K to, you know, twelfth grade. Our initial thinking was let's kind of focus on our preschool age kids and focus on that. Do a better job at preschool, more kids in preschool. Help serve our K twelve funding. We've heard from you. Community impact and we need additional time and rationale. John, if you're telling me that you tried everything you could do in one and two, and it's still not sustainable, like you did a really great job implementing one and two, and it's still not working, then maybe we'll buy it as a rationale for families. But as I told you earlier, with the why we are here, we haven't done a great job on one and two. So for us to say, we've tried everything we can try and we know we need to sunset it. Families are saying to us in their communications, give us more rationale, give us, give us a chance, right? To make this sustainable. So my recommendation tonight to try to bring some closure to this with the board is to have the board see if they're agreeable. Administration would like to say give us a shot at implementing one or two. Knowing there's going to be tuition increases with their update schedule to see if it's sustainable or not. And then we can predict next step to give additional time to families, recognize that community impact, be more transparent, and then give a final rationale if we've you know, screened all we can out of those and they're still not working. So we can make one or two or a hybrid between one and two work administratively if we can meet those assumptions. Okay. And that's what I want you to hear. So administration is no on four. Unless four is combined with these and four could certainly be a part of strategic planning, but a standalone does, just doesn't do it there. What I missed, Christina. On that. Yep. Touch on, Liz, I'm the same thing from your perspective on that. Okay, I know we talked for a long time. So next slide. Now from our trustees, we can take some questions and I know we'll have some public comment later tonight. So I do want to thank Christina, Liz, Dr. Sli, our team for, this was a lot of good work in terms of trying to provide some snapshots and some analysis. Our team is trying to be open, honest and transparent as possible. Knowing again, as I said, there's some gray to these that, that is always going to be there without us getting too much into the weeds in a presentation. So, trustees. Questions, trustee Doxie.
Uh, yes, thank you for the presentation. I've got just a few questions. When I missed, when was the last time that we increased the tuition rates?
Did you share that? Year, we increased tuition rates fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
I just want to make sure it's correct.
Okay. And thank you for the comparison to show what other districts were doing. So Hope was the only other district.
Yes.
Outside of getting information in terms of what their rates are, where they're like deeper conversations in terms of how they administer their program and their successes or opportunities that we could glean from it. If not, I would encourage us to have some conversation with our neighboring district if we have it.
Um, there have been conversations with Holt's, not in great, great detail, and I want to be the same ratio issues with the lower programs being expensive are something that they're having to navigate to, but we can certainly have more conversations about how they're keeping it sustainable. uh, having to navigate to, um, but we can certainly have more conversations about how they're keeping it sustainable.
Okay. And can you, um, explain a little more the, um, I think it was under option one and to the restructure of the OPM enrichment to GSRP blend?
Yep.
Um, because if I'm understanding, it's do away with enrichment at OPM and do GSRP blend, but all families would not be eligible for GSRP. So can you explain that option, please?
So one of the options of, um, having our three-year-olds is the ability to have a parent be able to have the morning and afternoon option that they need for full daycare and they want that Montessori experience. You are correct. Yeah, our three-year-olds would be at a tuition, um, our four-year-olds. Um, we are confident would all be free under the new guidelines of the universal preschool, free preschool for all. We still haven't gotten those guidelines. We've been able to submit our preferences for how we, um, would enroll for our building specifically. Um, and if we were given those classrooms at OPM, I would work with Kelly for her to, um, have the same opportunity to, for preferences.
So would there still would be a program at OPM?
There would be a program at OPM, yes.
And right now it's 24 program?
So each classroom's a little bit different depending on the, on their square footage. Um, but with the GSRP, the one caveat is even if they have a classroom of 24 or a capacity of 26, um, uh, GSRP capacity is 20. So we would have to limit that classroom to 20.
And currently you fill that classroom or don't fill that classroom?
This year we have, I believe, 12 open spots. Um, we have lost a handful already to GSRP programs, um, and we had, uh, a little bit more of a struggle filling that program this year.
12 open slots for the GSRP program?
For the three and four-year-olds for PPK.
For the PPK. Okay, I would just encourage us, could, so selfishly, again, my kids went through the Montessori program, starting in PPK. I needed that full coverage. And so unless we are 100% sure that families in the Montessori program, um, would be able to transition to the GSRP, um, with the universal pre-K, I would just caution us and just make sure that we are 100% sure that we can uh, provide that opportunity if, uh, possible. Um, one last question, um, on slide 18. Can you explain what is behind, um, it's all other program administration, summer, breakdays, Montessori classroom? What is in that? Um, because we were losing funding.
Go on.
Slide eight, uh, 17 or 18. I had 18, but maybe, nope, not that slide. Yes. Yes. So what, what is behind that, given that we were losing funding in 2018, we continue to lose funding?
Before we answer that, I do want Christina just to, um, talk about how we fill the enrichment program currently. If it's over, there's more demand and there is supply.
Okay, yeah. So, um, from a parent perspective, you know, uh, our building, uh, for PPK does use a lottery base because we do have more demand typically for the slots we have for our, their three-year-olds or four-year-olds, depending on the amount of siblings going in. So we do use a lottery-based system for that, and we would continue to work with Kelly with, um, her preferences on how she wants to go forward. Um, I also see the value in the program. I have four that went through from three on up. So I hear you with the value of what that program has.
Thank you.
That all other line item. So we have some other programs. We have breakdays. We have summer programs. So with programs that we're really not talking about in here. So we've combined them. Um, we have Montessori classroom, that, that other portion of the three and four-year-olds stay where they are in with the five-year-olds. The three and four-year-olds, um, pay tuition for that half of the day. So that's in there. In addition, the program administration is, uh, the, the direct cost to, to childcare is, you know, the, the administrative staff over at Edgewood, um, to, for, um, registrations, you know, admin staff, clerical, you know, the director of the program, those types of costs um, are, are in that, that line item.
It would be helpful, um, moving forward, like just to be clear, what each of those, eh, I mean, I I get you have them all lumped in there, but again, because we were losing funding in 2018 and we continue to lose funding with all that's lumped in that category, um, it would be helpful to see what that breakdown is and to know what we're doing or what we're looking at to do differently, um, where there's opportunity to cut some expenses, because that's a eh, I hear you say it's other programming, but it goes into the full uh, picture when we're looking at, at the
Sure, we can do that. We were just trying to balance the, the quantity of data to present.
And I appreciate, I appreciate the level that, um, that was provided, but given that that's almost between 300 and 400,000.
Yeah.
Just helpful to know. Thank you.
Other trustees? Questions? Trustee cabinet?
Okay, thank you both for that. That was very helpful. I have a few questions. Um, first of all, just on the, uh, all other things, I would assume, I'm, well, I'm gonna guess since we don't do early release days anymore, then the big impact on how many, you know, because I would assume we had a lot of kids who came during early release and use childcare. Since we don't do that anymore, I'm curious. You know, that would have factored in. And you maybe don't know, but.
I don't have the exact numbers, but I, I will say we do offer our half-day dismissals and early release and, uh, half-days are a challenge in general for our school age because a majority of our staff for those programs are students. So the only uh, full-time individuals we have are the lead teachers, um, site directors for those locations. So we usually have to limit the capacity no matter what, depending on the staffing. Uh, so we could potentially bring on more students, but we don't have the staff sometimes for that.
Thank you. Um, and then field rentals, and I know that we will be getting our fields back, but that's probably several, several years in the future. I would think.
Yes.
I mean, so it's not like that's gonna be our fix next year.
No, yeah, we're, um, a year away from, uh, Chippewa being open, but then we lose Cornell. Uh, and then we're two years away from Cornell being open and then, uh, we lose Kennewa. Um, now, the new, the new Kennewa is gonna have, you know, gyms as well, but, um, that transition's gonna take a while. Yes.
Um, okay. And then when would we be doing the reassessment if we were to do option one or option two? When would you reassess to see if it's?
So if you can go to the sustainability slide for me, please?
He's toward the end. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, one more before that. So our, our plan here is to, not one, one more, sorry, after that, I misspoke. There we go. So we have this, these check-in dates here. Our intention is to bring to the board and again, also at local meetings. Good news, this meeting, good news, this meeting, good news, this meeting. We're gonna keep going along with what we're doing. It appears to be working. If we have a stretch of two or three of these with some that we're not meeting that sustainability, then we're gonna have to come to the board and community and say, are there other strategies we can try? If not, we need to make some decisions about timeline. Okay? If it's a good and bad, good and bad, we're gonna have to come and talk to the board and community about it, but we have four check-ins within a year. If they're all green, then we're, we're sustainable. We're seeing some inconsistencies here or they're all red with the check-ins. We're not making the ends meet. After two or three of those, we're gonna come to you with, here's what we think the next step should be.
Okay, so potentially we're looking at another year, we could be still losing money, you know, at our check-ins, so.
So we talked about that. Yep.
Right, so.
So we talked about that as a group. Again, we think with the waitlist we have with, uh, tuition increases we have and, uh, 75% and maintain BNA care where it's at, that we think that's a, a conservative approach to meeting the enrollment thresholds. We maybe will do better than that. If we're at 80%, 100%, if we increase our BNA numbers, now you're gonna see profits instead.
And are you gonna have to increase staff? If we fill all those gaps?
So currently I do have floats, so I could, um, so for our infant classroom, we would have to transition one of our floats or two of our floats to compensate for the extra children that we would bring in, because currently we have three staff for our six children. Um, we have a a morning and afternoon that blend together to make a full day. And then we have a midday person like the eight to four, um, eight to five, depending on the days and the needs of the children. Um, but our toddler programs currently are staff to add on the extra one or two children.
And then, um, would you need to replace that float?
No, I have, I currently have enough floats right now that I could sustain the program without hiring. We will be hiring for summer as we always have needs, um, for individuals who take the summer off, but that is, hiring is part of what we do.
Okay, so you wouldn't need to hire anybody else?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. And I do have some other things, but that's
Other trustees questions? Trustee win?
Um, so I just wanted to repeat that I understood what you said. The options one through three, um, they all operate the same in sustaining the program, not giving like a bit, like one of those options isn't better financially than the others.
Tough question to answer. Um, there's more risk with option one and two because there's assumptions being made. So if the assumptions of 75% and the assumption of BNA care enrollment staying the same aren't met, it's not as sustainable as option three, takes a lot of that off of the table because you're looking at converting to GSRP, which is money in, money out. Okay? So if all of the, um, assumptions are met, we're in a similar place. But there's more risk to options one and two because of the assumptions that are made. Makes sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then a follow-up question that I had was, um, something I, I felt like I heard a lot was about capacity of management um, and district resources stretched thin as kind of pain points. And I, I think they were directed more option one and two than option three. So I was like, kind of curious if that's, if I heard that correctly, if you're saying that option three is less of a stretching the district than on resources and less of a capacity of management issue, because that, I was confused on that part.
Yeah, and I don't know that our team has consensus on that, to be honest, whether it is or isn't, but it's a consideration. So, you know, is it, um, a lot more work for Christina to have infants and toddlers than it is? You know, three and four-year-olds running around, probably depends on who your three and four-year-olds are that are running around, right? So, um, but, um, you can see that the account, some of the indirect costs, indirect management of a program that is more focused, it'd be easier to focus on qualities preschool programming instead of quality preschool programming and quality infant programming. So, you know, you can make that argument that if you're um, less is more in terms of, we're gonna get really good at one thing before we try to do four or five things. Okay? Yep. Trustee Sashna.
Um, so when, since the rate increase will not be effective until July, when do you think we need to be at 75% at least by what?
I mean, if, if we're gonna make a commitment to try options one or two, there's no reason why we wouldn't try to fill the classrooms now. Okay, what we wanted to do was forecast a tuition increase for our families so they could plan. You know, these aren't insignificant increases for our families. They're significant. And some of our families may be priced out and we recognize that too. So we felt like it was hearing that theme from our families that we need time, we need time, it's hard to find other care to just, you know, throw a 20 to 40% increase on them in two weeks. Didn't feel right. But we can, we can start maxing out the classes tomorrow. Again, if we're gonna consider option three and, and within six, I don't want to do that because that seems cruel to do to a parent, right? Hey, come here. Now we're gonna pull the trigger on option three right now. Um, we can forecast it in the future if we, if we exhaust options one and two and can look at you and say, we did those as well as we could and they just didn't work.
So going back with, let's say we go with either option one or two with the rate hike traditionally, oh, oh, OPS have given sibling discount. Are you factoring that? With either of the budget lines, like whenever you on presentation?
That will have, we've answered that one.
That will, yeah. That will affect a lot of families' budget who might have.
Sure.
So are you asking if, if we said, okay, now there is not a, a impact in, or I'm sorry, there is not a second child? Is that what you?
I didn't understand whether we were factoring that in or not.
It's across the board, the, those rates. So in the program, we didn't go family by family and make an assumption whether or not there would be a, um, a change because of a student discount, I'm a second child discount. We did not make that go in through to that level.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Please, uh, this is, it, no, yeah, no, we got it. Thank you, though.
So so is that like, eh, is that an assumption that it will stay or?
Employee or second child discounts additional term that will stay? Yes, we're not just talking about having that go away at all in these assumptions. But the discount, the tuition would be increased. So I'm not sure what the discounts are right now for siblings. Um, if it's a percent, then it's a percent of a higher dollar amount. Um, so it'd be the same, same philosophy.
Thank you. And last one, last question. So great start to quality. Our rating will, whether regardless which option we go with, our rating will have to go up. What steps have we taken and what steps are we going to take to ensure that we do go up from one to four or five grades?
Some of the plans that we have worked with our licensing consultant is, uh, different transition, um, practices, different check-in practices, uh, more name-to-face, uh, accounts throughout the day. Um, we have, we found that our incidents that we had in August were due to transition. So that was our focus. Um, and that being said, we also want for our younger infant and toddlers, we limit transitions to very little just because we, that's it, it's hard to maneuver 12 children, um, who you know, want to go every which way and we only have three adults. So, uh, those are some of the practices we're putting in place.
Other questions from the trustees? Just trustee Brims?
Yeah, um, so looking at the current enrollment, it looks like across the infant and then one and two toddlers, like, uh, we're already at 75% if you add all of those together. So um, in terms of like helping balance the budget, we wouldn't need to necessarily bring in a lot more uh, students to get there or kids.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and another question I have is like on the tuition increases, um, in your, like, was there communication with families to get their thoughts on sort of like what, uh, just their opinions on different rates of increase?
Uh, we did not do a public, uh, comment for that.
Okay.
Trustee Daxi.
Uh, just one last question. Um, you mentioned the potential of rental of rooms at Edgewood, and if I understood you, it sounded like, um, more childcare. If that is the option that's on the table, is there concern about families enrolling in with that particular vendor or whomever?
Without saying too much, it would not compete with our programming.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee cabinet?
I didn't hit my mic on last time, so I don't know if any of it. Next time I turn my mic in. Um, I had a question also about, um, renting space to another facility. I just want to make sure there won't be any security concerns of, you know, different people coming into the building that it would all still be under our secure.
Yeah, for sure. And we, we've, we've, um, done, we've done that before with like the ISD or other, um, where they rent some classrooms for OTPT for itinerant staff members that might be traveling to other districts and they follow our, our, um, background checks, security protocols. Again, we're not saying we will rent. It's just, uh, it's a stone that we should not leave unturned with the situation we're in.
Sure.
Potential revenue enhancement. Yeah.
Okay, and I have one last budget question. So tuition rates wouldn't start or increases won't start until July. So up tuition rates wouldn't start or increases won't start until July. So up until then, we're still gonna lose essentially twenty thousand dollars a month. Cause even if we were to, you know, fill it.
Or a little less if we fill it.
A little less, but I mean, a little less or a significant amount less. So again, that's what a hundred thousand to make us get to July that we're gonna lose a hundred and twenty thousand to go to August.
Again, we, we can, we can do it tomorrow if we need to, but again, trying to incorporate the feedback we've heard from our families, we're trying to find a.
Absolutely, um, you know, that us, our board, I mean, our main thing is balancing our budget.
Yes.
That's our main job and to use our tax dollars, you know, taxpayers' dollars appropriately and to fund our K through twelve.
Yes.
So that's where I'm, you know, I still keep coming back to this even when we.
A hundred thousand dollars, you're talking, I mean, not quite a teacher, but that's a teacher.
It's a teacher.
Yep.
And again, you know, our job is K through twelve, so that's.
Like a teacher, an average teacher costs of benefits, it's probably over that, but that's what I look at. When I see deficits like, you know, four hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars. I'm thinking the number of staff we have to service kids.
Yep.
And eighty-five percent of our budget is people. So you're not going to get at those types of numbers without looking at, you know, how are you gonna, how are you gonna, what decisions are you making? What trade-offs do you have on impacting your K-12 programming if you're losing four hundred thousand dollars? That's two or three teachers.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's exactly what we're thinking. And you know, I understand completely the hardship and that it's such a, there's so much chaos right now and there's so many variables happening just in society and everybody's feeling a little shaky on things. And I hate the idea of more stress on families because of us. However, stress on our K through twelve families, stress on our teaching staff, on our administrators, and that's something I think we're really all gonna have to balance and decide. So.
And, you know, I will say from the both the preschool and K-12 side of things, we have outstanding staff. By no means would I ever tell anyone we're like overstaffed in terms of, we're providing intentional supports for our kids in this program and our K-12 programs. And any of those changes would, would be painful to make. I mean, we were very intentional about adding supports through COVID for behaviors. Um, administration went and interviewed all of our teachers in all the buildings and said, what do you need? We need social workers, we need counselors, we need student support help. We need, um, RTI coaches and, and those, I mean, we, we added a lot of supports pre-COVID that we know that, um, are difficult for us to sustain. So that's the challenge we have and it's tough when you, you know, you make a recommendation of taking away from one group to help to another, um. But then again, we had to look at what is our core mission and that's, you know, K-12.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yep. Less funding with our K-12 programming and specialty programming. Thanks.
Trustee Shasta.
So I just wanted to say I do appreciate.
New habits, yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to say thank you for providing all the data, um, and giving us, showing us the clear option one, option two, option three, option four. But we also have to be mindful, we are here for the community and we do live in childcare desert. With it, it per data, that, that's what it shows. So, um, I just want to say thank you for providing all that while we make this difficult decision one way or the other.
I did have a question just about the expenditure side. Uh, you just said eighty-five percent of our expenses are, are people. Is that true for these programs that we're talking about today as well?
That's a good question. That's true district-wide. I'll tell you what, executive director Lance.
Or that's, yeah.
That is district-wide. Um, if I had to look at this one, I would say this one might be a bit more because there's less less cost in some of the other supplies and curriculums and things that you need on the instructional side. Um, I could always pull that data if the board wants that, but.
I don't know, so I guess, you know, behind that is this question of whether there's any potential savings that you see and non, I mean, I, I understand salary increases have contributed to the increase overall in expenditures. People deserve it, makes sense. You've said that. It's just wondering if there's any other opportunities to, uh, reduce costs in the program.
So those programs have pretty small supply budgets. Um, what else do you spend, um, for infants and toddlers?
We provide stack, uh, along with, um, milk for our infants and toddlers, um, along with their supply budget for, um, all of their curriculum needs.
I do want to note, we heard from families too, is the things we don't supply are equally important to recognize. Uh, cause some of the private daycares come with diapers and all those other things for children and our families are providing those. So when you look at our increase here, it's not apples to apples in terms of OCHMS to private care where we ask parents to contribute diapers and wipes and other things that private daycares maybe aren't. So just want to put that out there too, that we heard from the community.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Kavanaugh.
Um, mine's real quick. Um, our, people in aftercare numbers and how they have gone down. I know that in a previous meeting, we had talked about how our incoming kindergarten class is quite a bit smaller than say like our graduating seniors were and that we're seeing smaller class sizes as they're adult. And is that gonna, or is that partly why we have fewer kids in our before and after? And is that gonna be a trend we're gonna be worried about?
So that's something we have to monitor. We don't know yet if it's a trend. We have one year of that data being, um, what we're talking about is our graduating class of seniors was one of the largest graduating classes of seniors we've had in the last twelve to fifteen years. And our incoming kindergarten class is one of the smallest numbers of kindergarten classes we've had in the last twelve years. The difference between the number of kids leaving and coming was around seventy-five, I believe. So if that trend continues, our district's going to be getting smaller over time. We have one year of data to show that. We have an outlier on the high side leaving and an outlier on the low side coming. So we have to monitor that. Certainly if that trend continues, we're gonna have fewer kids that'll have the opportunity even be in before and after care, because we'll just have fewer kids overall. But it's too soon to say, it's something we're monitoring.
Trustee win.
So, um, on the other option slide, uh, one thing that was said was that we do have some extra classrooms. We could add GSRP classrooms too. Um, but from the numbers, it seems like that wouldn't actually help the budget because those GSRP classrooms are break even. So should that even be a consideration? Again, going back to that theme of spreading ourselves thin and, um, the management of those, like, should we add more if they're not adding to the budget?
So, um, you could look at it a couple of ways that, yes, you can look at it that way. You're adding more classrooms, more three and four-year-olds to manage, that's more work, right, for our administration to do. You can also look at the more three and four-year-olds we have in our system that are following the curriculum and learning school behaviors and getting their skills up higher. The less intervention we're gonna need by the time they get to kindergarten. So it can be a pay me now, pay me later type of approach. So, um, it's not a reason to do it or not to do it. They're just both fair considerations.
I'm, I'm noticing that you, you asked us to like think about a philosophical question.
Yes.
And really the difference between options one and two, and we haven't talked about that at all.
Right.
Um, so I'm just thinking about where you're going with this. Um, again, the main option, difference between options one and two are the, having a common tuition increase, um, versus having a higher tuition increase at the lower, the lower age groups.
So, and again, I don't need the board to set the tuition. I think that would be inappropriate for the board to be who sets the tuition. That's a management uh, control. We just thought we wanted to bring a couple of options in terms of philosophical approach to see, because we know either there's gonna be hardships on our families either way, depending on the family. Um, and the board can say, John, we want you to try either app, you're gonna have to do tuition increases. Come up with what you think the best, um, you know, best, most reasonable number is when you look at the other numbers and make it happen. And report out sustainability would be fine, but if the board has a strong feeling about shared across the board. Or, um, we philosophically think the, you know, more expensive program should pay a little bit more, we can certainly take those into consideration.
Trustee Kavanaugh.
I just have to, last thing, I promise, um. This is our bigger conversation though of what are our board lanes? And I'm starting to kind of struggle with the values, but then the budget and we know that our lane is the budget. So at some point, is this our decision, you know, is that we tell you, look, you've got to get the budget down and then you figure that out.
Yes.
You know, I mean, I don't know, at some point we don't even debate this. We just say you need to get the budget down and that's.
Yeah, and the board does not have to pick an option here. Um, of course administratively, I'm your only employee. And you're in charge of the budget and you know what, where the budget is. So you can say, John, you told us tonight, the strategies for option one and two weren't implemented well. You figured it out with your team and you report out to us in the community on a, on an annual basis to see if this is sustainable or not. And then we can make other philosophical decisions later if we need to. That's really all I need tonight. If the board wants to head in that direction. If the board decides that, you know what, the budget's looking too bleak, there's too much risk with this. We want you to come up with a plan to, you know, to sunset and come up with option three. That gives me what I need as well. I can make either work. Again, the first two, a little more risk, we have confidence that, um, we think we can try to make that work and, and, and see where we land, but I don't need the board to get stuck in the weeds of twenty percent or fifteen percent or, or give me a direction because I'm your employee and you're responsible for a budget that you know is in a deficit. So.
I mean, and I'm not trying to like, you know, pass it on to you, but you know, this is.
That is my job.
You can pass it on to me.
This is one of those discussions that we have to often of like, really, how far do we go in, in decision-making like this? So.
Yeah. Uh, trustee cops.
I agree philosophically with what trustee Kavanaugh just said, that the particular rates are not of a board concern. I think the budget question certainly is. It's not sustainable on its current path. We have to do something different. I think option one and two, in my opinion, are totally reasonable. I don't know where that we all fall on in terms of, you know, exact rates for different ages. To me, that's an administrative function. You know what I mean? And what's most appropriate for different things? I mean, frankly, this is a market discussion is what it is and we're certainly not equipped to do that. Um, I mean, I don't want to, I mean, just for example, I, I wouldn't want to raise before and after care so much that we lose kids because, you know, we're raising the rates so much, you know what I mean? When those are, you know, what's really supporting the program ultimately. So, I mean, that's my philosophical view of this and where I would land. I don't know that the board discussion on exact rates is, you know, something that needs to be happened, in my opinion.
No, I agree. And for, for me, you know, one of the big questions, again, given the reduction in the before and after care, uh, which has been subsidizing the other programs for years, maybe since their inception. Um, I know it's come back this year, like, I don't know how much has come back. I don't know how confident you are that you, that trend can continue. So that's, again, you don't need to answer that. That would just be the kinds of things I would be thinking about in terms of sustainability. Uh, trustee Doxy.
I, I do agree in terms of the administrative function, in terms of determining the rate. But I cannot sit here and say like what was presented in terms of like forty percent increase. Families just cannot afford it, they can't afford it. Um, I mean, it, we've all been there, I, I guess, most of us, but to provide care for infant and toddler, it's a second house note as it is, it just is. And given the economy and everything going on, um, I just, again, I can't sit here and say, yeah, go forth and if that's the determination, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. Um, but I just want to publicly say like, I do support like a shared tuition. But with the understanding of with the before and after care, if the numbers are already low. Perhaps that's just a little smaller, but at forty percent increase for our younger, and I know the costs are higher to care for our younger, um, the babies. However, that's, that's just a huge, um, I think we would be, uh, putting ourselves out of providing that care altogether. And so that's what we're looking to do. That's what we would get to with that. So. That's it.
And I want to thank you trustee Doxy for mentioning that because, you know, the team, we, we, we've talked about these options for months. Okay, and the administrative team poked back and forth on just raise the rates and see what happens. And one of my concerns was we have to raise the rates that much. Like, uh, people are self-selecting out, might be an easier way to do it, but it feels that's hard and it just feels wrong when I look at our our approach to try, trying to capture family. So I, I went, I mean, we struggled with that as a team to, um, you know, we, we came here a month ago to you, we could have brought you these and get, we're just gonna present that the rates are raised this amount to stay sustainable and we didn't, I didn't want to do that as a superintendent. And of course, there's pros and cons to that decision made by me because of you know, everyone's here because they're upset by the one, just the one option coming forth, but I struggle with that as well.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate, as other trustees said, just the work that went into this presentation and looking at other options and hearing from the board and the community, I did hear the community, the families say, raise the rates, if that's what it takes to, you know, keep the programming. But I also heard you mention that both with option one and two, we're not necessarily, um, like increasing the budget, but it's provided we are at that seventy-five percent capacity. It maintains and it's providing a service to the community that goes into our K-12 programming. I know we are K-12, however. We are supporting the, the, our community. So just thank you for that.
Okay, um, thank you very much for the presentation. And, um, we are now actually going to move into um, the, uh, public comment. At this time in the meeting, citizens have an opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest that may or may not be part of the evening's agenda. Citizens are required to limit comments to three minutes. We do have a lot of people here and so we will be kind of a stickler for that three-minute mark, just as a heads up. Um, except when the superman is waved by board president during the meeting, a designated timekeeper, that's trustee Burns to my left here. Will communicate to the individual who's addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment and input. However, the board meeting format is designed to facilitate the evening's agenda and therefore restricts board members from engaging in conversation with speakers or immediately responding to questions. Questions and concerns may be addressed by the board later in the agenda and may be assigned for follow-up by the board or superintendent at a later date. Uh, first up, we have, um, I'm gonna call your name, you come up and restate your name and your address, please. Seth Burke.
Hi, my name is Seth Burke. I live at three eight one three New Salem Avenue. My daughter currently attends OPM and that's mainly what I'll be speaking about today. Uh, it's wonderful. She's thriving. It's incredible. I only have three minutes, I'll skip past that, but a lot of positives and thank you all for your work in that. I would like to speak on the before care, the after care and everything in here. And specifically the idea that like, uh, the removal of that or even the shrinking of that specifically turns OPM into a school only for the rich and the elite, the people who have the resources to provide a nanny to come pick them up or to, or to be able to have a single income household, have someone drop them off. There's already not transportation OPM, which is your highest rated school. So you actually in a K-12 setting, as a lot of you have tried to shove off by going, oh, it's preschool, it doesn't actually count. OPM does function K two through five, but those spots are decided in preschool. So if I can't get there in preschool, I will have to withdraw my daughter if this happens. If I don't have the spot in preschool, then the people that get those spots are only the most wealthy and most elite. And then we can fight over the scraps when we get to kindergarten. So you've created your highest school, own a publicly funded school only for the richest people in your district and that is through K-12. I, I reject your idea that this is not a philosophical argument because this will reflect on you. The people you employ as teachers and secretarial staff would not be able to take advantage of this. I I do believe that this is a value system. As the highest paid administrator in Ingram County was saying earlier, you can't be everything to everybody when the finances are hard, but you do decide this. This is a value decision. It does reflect on you and your values and in today's political day and age, those about, those messages are louder and clearer than ever. Please make the right decision. Thank you for your time.
Uh, if we can withhold applause, just so we can get more people their time, I'd appreciate it. Uh, Luke Bowman.
So when the going gets tough, the tough get going and here we are. Luke Bowman, sixty-seven forty-four English Oak Drive. And this is a profitable business. I don't know why it hasn't been profitable. We need to sharpen these numbers and understand where these expenses are. There's eight thousand daycares out there that'd be closed tomorrow too. Soon as these rates go up, twenty, forty percent, we're on the high end and not only are we paying for diapers and wipes, food's provided as well at those private centers. Katie, John, you've been here since twenty nineteen. And now three hundred thousand dollars out of a seventy million budget is a problem. Why now? When did sustainability become a focus? There's been five to six years to deal with this. And it has been dealt with. It's unacceptable. Anywhere else? Anywhere else? The seats would be terminated and somebody new would be there. It's a lot of money. It's over a million bucks. Not happy. And just a reminder, there's a lot of preschool opportunities out there. Adding more G S R P is is not going to fill seats and it's not gonna help the budget. So, two weeks ago, we heard about the spiel that we wanna be proactive and not reactive. But now we're finding out a year ago, stuff was happening. We found out in August, stuff was happening that was not communicated to not communicated to parents. We don't know what to trust anymore. And it's sad. And this is a service to the community. And to disrupt this many people, over three hundred thousand dollars of a seventy million dollar budget, sharpen the pencil, guys. Let's do this.
Next up, thank you. Uh, we have Candace, uh, Boltry. Candace Boltry. She may have left. Uh, John Chen.
Um, my original comment wasn't gonna be about budget, but, um, most of that has been answered by the presentation, so thank you. Um, I do wanna comment about the, uh, the staffing and retention. I will say that, um, Edgewood, sorry, John Chen, one, two, four, four Harbor Cut. Um, Edgewood has some of the best, uh, retention in terms of people. If you go to any of the private places in town, they will proudly tell you that their longest tenured person is six months. That's easily the shortest tenured person at Edward, if not longer. So that's it.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, Delane Kimlin.
Hi, um, I'm Auntie Delane, Miss Auntie Delane. And I really just wanted to, um, get up here, not so much to talk at you, because I know you got a lengthy email from me. Horrible grammar, I apologize for that, but it was an emotional, you know, it is an emotional time. I really just wanna say to all of you how much I love you guys and your babies. And the reason that I'm here is because, I mean, I kind of forced myself into your families. But you are part of my family now, too. Um, and it means a lot to me. All of you zooming, yeah, thanks, everybody. Um, I do have to keep going back and I, I hate to beat the dead horse, especially as a vegetarian. But I honestly have to say, the biggest barrier, the survey that just came out, the biggest barrier in this district, John, it's your salary. It is. And those of you who wrote it up, like, honestly, that's a ton of money. And it takes, it takes an even bigger person to say, no, thank you. I don't need two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. That's all. Love you. Love you.
Thank you. Uh, Aaron Stock, Stuckel. Aaron Stuckel. Um, Neil, uh, Given, Givenati.
Everybody, I'm sorry.
Uh, sorry, you're Aaron, Aaron Stockton? No, and then Neil Givenati? Neil Lux, okay, thank you. Uh, Amanda Dershevnik. Sorry.
Don't worry, everyone, butchers my name, so I'm used to it.
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Uh, my name's Amanda Dernovcheck. Um, I'm at one, two, two, six Live Oak Circle. And or, um, I'm sorry, that's my parents' address. That's how upset I am right now. I'm a full grown adult talking about where I grew up. Okay. Um, I'm at four, two, oh, six Swabeningo in Oakhamess. I will keep this brief. I took a couple notes of things I wanted to say. Thank you for the updated presentation tonight. I I know last time I saw you, I said, do better, and I think you did better. Um, thank you for saying that you, as a superintendent, are responsible for this, because I agree with you that you are, and and the board, too. Your favorite opinion about the outcome is really clear. I think that you wanna shut this down. And that, it feels icky. I don't like how it's come about. But I like that we're having more conversations and that we're giving the board at least some information to make a decision on, so thanks for that. Um, every dollar that that Edwood takes takes away from K twelve. I heard you say it multiple times. It makes it feel like this program is like the ugly stepchild that nobody wants. Um, but if it's been a problem for six years, why, I I mean, I second, second Luke's opinion, why are we just addressing it now? One thing that, uh, trustee doxy, you asked, when was the last increase? The last increase was in July of last year, and it was fifteen percent, and parents were notified two weeks in advance. So we've heard a lot tonight about, we hear you, we wanna make it better, we wanna give you heads up. That did not happen last year, so we do need a heads up if that's gonna happen again. I agree with you, the forty percent is not acceptable. It's way overpriced, and people are gonna have to, like, opt out. And parents are gonna have to quit their jobs if that's the, you know, the route we take. But this is solvable. We want more information on expenses. Parents wanna dig into the numbers. This is what we're doing at night, is digging online, trying to find information. Just give it to us so we can feel good about this decision. He mentioned staff wages are causing the 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 deficit, but we want more information about that. And we ought to advertise. I never heard, I've never seen an advertisement for this program. If we put something out there, people will come. I truly believe that. And all of us will advocate for this program and and find new kids for it. Transparency is a better way to do this. I know some of the trustees are really worried about the budget. Why wasn't this addressed? This has been too long. We're moving in the right direction, but please take a holistic approach and think about the families that are impacted and truly think about it. Thank you.
Uh, Gillian Lambert.
Gillian Lambert, I live at four, two, two, eight, eight Arbor Drive. I mean, the warning signs are there. The consensus decision was made. You exacerbated the problem. You exacerbated the problem even more by not filling slots when you knew you had ones to fill. And you knew that they were there. There's been a lack of oversight and unchecked things. It's not just at, um, you know, Edgewood and about the budget. There was mold in the building. If you didn't know that, they've remediated it. We don't know where the money came from. We were just notified that the rooms were getting updated. Is that any to do with the deficit that we're seeing? Because the parents, I've asked several times, haven't heard anything. Um, and then I asked for the mold report, it never gave it to me because apparently there was no mold testing actually done. It was just suggested because there's probably mold. Um, so there is a lack of transparency when it comes to that, too, at Edgewood. Um, there was the lead, there's the mold here, and why the aftercare is happening over there. It's like you leave these buildings to rot. There's a reason Cornell has to be completely revealed. Because you have to maintain the buildings you have. Uh, there's property that could have been continued that used to be rented out at the school that's not being used and it's being used for storage. Have we looked at, is it even still able to be will, at Wilcox, is it, to be rented out as well? Um, because that seems like, you know, property that's just being left there. Um, is there ways to expand fields? I heard that the fields at Edgewood cannot be used until after six. So, well, but they use the, um, the gym earlier than that at Edgewood during the day, just so you know. So why can't the fields be opened earlier? Um, so those are some things that I think, and there could be ways that you could expand upon the summer program. I said that before. It's really hard. You should get the word out about it earlier to parents, because now is the time you sign up for summer camps, not after spring break. Um, and it is a great summer camp program that offers two field trips, and that should be advertised and told to parents. It, my kid loves the camp. I can't even get her in every week. And she'd love to be. Um, so I'd just like to see, um, you know, to continue to support those grounds. I'm excited to see that maybe there's possible tenant. I may even know who it is, as I suggested one. Maybe looking to expand their programs. So I would just like to see that we continue the discussion a bit more. And a forty percent increase would really hurt some families and probably push them out of the center. Um, something more reasonable around twenty percent would definitely be preferred, I think, for parents. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Lindsay Obnin. Oh, Brian, I'm sorry.
My name is Lindsay O'Brien, and I have two children at Edwood, uh, one in the infant program right over there. And, um, one in the toddler twos. Um, and I live at four, three, three, zero Hewlett Road. I would like to thank the board and superintendent hood for putting this presentation together. We appreciate the additional information. After hearing the discussions and reviewing today's presentation, I'm convinced that keeping Edgewood open for our families is a very solvable opportunity. Um, I do think that the classrooms at issue are not the main financial problem. That you'll see the eighteen nineteen deficit was sixty thousand, twenty-four, twenty-five deficit was two forty-seven, making the difference one eighty-seven thousand. Meanwhile, the preschool fours went from a positive twenty K to a negative sixty K, turning eighty-four thousand from the two years. The Montessori increased their deficit by sixty thousand. Before and after care lost over three hundred thousand dollars, admin costs and that other line item that we're unsure about. Um, increased their losses by nearly a hundred thousand. So using dollar amounts in the order of priority, improving and enrolling the before and after care should be the primary focus. We really need to get that back up to where it should be. Um, obviously infants and toddlers did have a deficit, so as described with raising, raising the numbers and raising tuition, we can make improvements there. And then administer some admin and other costs. We need to uncover what those are because that accounts for quite a lot as well. If before and after care were as revenue positive now, presumably there would be no issues because that would completely cover the losses. And I feel like the infant and toddler program is being used as a scapegoat and isn't even the largest financial issue that is facing facing Edwood. The revenue problems could be solvable through increasing enrollment, as you guys have outlined, increasing tuition, which which has been mentioned. And also controlling costs. These include labor costs, like let's be efficient with our staffing and our ratios. And when salaries go up or when hiring goes up, let's also align the tuition increases as well. Um, there was a July first increase this past year, but one was the one previous to that. I'm not actually sure. That'd be interesting to know. Um, and let's just be efficient, like, for, you know, can we have on-call, part-time people for maybe people that might be calling in um, rather than overstaffing at times. Additionally, it would be helpful to, as I mentioned, to see these admin costs as they've increased seventy-five percent over the last six years. I know that several people have mentioned advertising. I work in advertising, so I can attest that it works. So if the need is there, I definitely, definitely believe in that. Um, I will just end by saying that Edwood is a great recruiting tool as well. It starts the pipeline of students that continue through these K to twelve programs, so getting them in early is very beneficial to them.
Oh, you're at three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Viva Nasser.
Hello, my name is Viva Nasser. Um, I'm at four, six, four, five Wellington Drive. I've got four kids. The last time I spoke, it was a a great opportunity to be able to speak about the interesting predicament my family and I are in. My husband works on that east side of the coast, the the state. I work on at Western Michigan University. I'm a professor over there in the management department. We've already established that this is a great program. We love it. This is awesome. But the technicalities is what I think we're talking about today, right? And, um, I actually do research in gender in the workplace, work-family balance. And I know this area very well. I also teach sustainability at the college level. My four-year business students, I talk about what sustainability looks like, and we keep using the word sustainability. But guess what? It's not just financial sustainability. There's social sustainability, which is defined as ability of a society or community to develop and maintain the structures, relationships, and resources that support a high quality of life for all its members, both now and for the future. So we stand here, whatever decision is made, we're gonna suffer, whatever it is, we know that. But think of us as a representation of the community of Oakhamess. And so how do we build social sustainability into everything that's been discussed? There are three points that I identified based on just preliminary. The first is thinking about the family unit, not just six through twelve. It's the family unit that goes in from the beginning all the way through. You're attracting the right people into this program, and that's important. People who know that women, second point, also want to work, and it's great for when women in the family work. If you increase the amounts by that much, forty percent, as was mentioned before, you're already cutting people down and selecting those who are financially capable of doing that. And you miss out on the opportunity to support families for both parents to continue on their careers. They stopped for two years, three years. Why would they go back after three years and put my child in three and fours when I haven't had support for the, you know, the younger ages? So there's also that piece of that sustainability. And the third point that I want to share is that we don't wanna increase or widen the gap between men and women. Based on the women gender research that I do, we know that there's no support, and it's a desert in terms of early childcare support. And so this so- social sustainability here is extremely important to consider. Financial, you can take care of that, but you can also take care of social. Philosophical is the ethical and social in the way that you guys described it. There's a balance, and I really encourage you to think through it all. Yes, you can go into superintendent hood and say, you figure it out. But then it's just gonna be an easy cross it off. It's not important. It is. This is bigger than you imagine. And then a lot of businesses today have a lot of problems with thinking about long-term plans. And if you're cutting down the two fundamental years for parents to be able to be sustainable in the long run, financially and emotionally and psychologically, then you're missing out on a lot of opportunities. So let's take a step forward in redesigning this program to be more supportive of these families so that we are more successful. And we continue to attract people like my family that came right in the middle of Oakhamess between two different cities in Michigan and figured out that this is the best school district. Keep it as the best school district by thinking about a holistic sustainability plan, not just financial. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mason Brunson, Mason Brunson?
I'm good. What she said.
Okay. Uh, Taylor Guest?
Uh, it's Taylor Gast, forty-five, twenty Comanche Drive. I'm here as a parent of two affected children and an advocate for fiscal responsibility and the long-term vision that made our district one of the best in the state. But I feel that tonight's presentation does not fully capture that vision. The finances indicate that Edgewood's early childhood services have operated for years and perhaps decades, not as a profit center, but as an investment in our community. This alone is enough to justify a more expansive review of the community education budget. But we also know that other public and private facilities provide these services. I fail to understand why service reductions and rate increases are options before we have considered these issues. By examining early childhood programming in isolation, rather than in the context of the broader community education budget and our district's goals, we are continuing down the same poorly conceived and community communicated plan that was evidenced uh, four weeks ago at the January twenty-seventh board board meeting. You have people in front of you here that wanna be advocate advocates for your district, for the staff of your district, for the services that are being provided for your district, from the very ground level, from the beginning. And we're talking talking about either reducing the the services provided to them or hurriedly charging them thousands more dollars a year. We can change this and instead approach this proactively, as you have discussed in prior weeks, and and not treat this as a patch-the-whole situation. You can have more than a thirty-minute conversation with us. Other specific concerns about tonight's presentation. Number one, there's a complete lack of comparative financial analysis. Holt provides these services at lower rates. How? For-profit services provide these at rates well below option two that you're throwing out. How? Without comparing our programs to public and private competitors, uh, perhaps beyond the greater Lansing area, uh, it really doesn't seem like we're well considering the 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 plan that you're putting out here. Second, the proposal fails to examine parts of the community education budget. The all-other category, as was mentioned earlier, has grown from a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss in twenty eighteen to a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss today. We said that we're just not talking about that today, and that's not enough. Reversing that or the before and after care trend would eliminate the vast majority of the deficit. I appreciate that 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 doesn't happen overnight. Facility rentals are part of this. You said that that's going to to reverse eventually, but we're still going to pay more because of that. And so it effectively sounds like you're passing on the costs of renovations to us. These issues deserve scrutiny too. Third, I disagree with the decision to assume that only seventy-five percent of enrollment should continue when that is, as was said. Where we're at right now. Why are we gonna pay more to incentivize you to do it what is happening essentially right now? Finally, where is the forward-looking discussion? What about alternative models? Funding sources, other sources of ledger leveraging economies of scale, developing new income streams. Learning from other districts inside and out of the area. How can we do? How can we suggest? Charging all of these people thousands more dollars a year? As a result of that level of input.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mario Martinez.
Good evening, Mario Martinez, forty-five forty-four Comanche Drive. You know, a few things I want to note, not gonna repeat several things that many had said here today, but. You know, a couple of things I want to point out, wages did increase. I absolutely helped advocate for that. I was part of that. They did not increase three hundred percent. So I think board, Katie, you mentioned you guys are responsible for the budget. And looking deeper into the budget of what is breaking down those costs, I think is very important. We've been asked why not, you know, last five years, a problem clearly didn't just happen this year. And from my perspective, when. Leadership in the district, department leaders do not review their budget on a monthly basis like every. Organization that has to run a business, this is why you got here. I have advocated that to John. I've advocated that to Liz and yet that is something that doesn't get done. So I think board, you need to ask yourself if your leaders are not reviewing this information on an ongoing basis. What else is happening and how much longer until a next big issue like this pops up? You know, there was an item on there talked about non-childcare facility rentals. You know, it was less than thirty K in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And we're on a deficit this year. That part is again perplexing to me when we make ten thousand dollars on a three-day rental for a dance at the high school. How does that match up? I think if you were to look at the actuals, ask for the raw data. You may have some more questions and have better perspective. It was noted, you know, we don't want to make a profit. I agree. As a taxpayer, do I want to continue to pay tuition? In a in an area where I'm already paying taxes and then what supplement the K through twelve? If the K through twelve budget is not sufficient, I think that's a different issue. But then to try to make money off of what you're asking these families here to then supplement that part. It's the complete opposite of what you just said is you don't want to drain K through twelve, but you're okay by adding it into take K through twelve. Doesn't make sense to me. You know, GSRP, you know, bringing more of those programs in, you know, my kids and that right now, he was in the four, got converted. Great, love it. Love this Carolina. But that's not limited to just the district. So there isn't this, you're gonna bring kids into GSRP and they're gonna funnel right into. Our K through twelve, because not every kid going in there is an Okemos eligible kid. So I think, you know, we have to be cautious on what is the true pipeline that that program is gonna bring in. And. You know, I would just continue to encourage the board to look at the financials. So that way we're not here again, because this is was stated, this did not happen overnight. You know, I feel badly for Christina. You know, she's been doing a great job and doing nothing but busting her butt to try to make this work. And she nor her predecessors had any visibility consistently into the financials to avoid this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we're gonna move this one in afterwards. So we do have a couple other cards, but they came in after we started this, so we will get back to those. In our meeting and next up, we have superintendent reports and requests. All right, just a couple of things this evening for trustees. There was recently a article in the Lansing State Journal that I think was a. Little misleading in terms of, there's an article on. Law enforcement, immigration, access to buildings. And want to make sure our community is aware that we have policies in place and have had policies in place. That define how and when any law enforcement can come into our school. And those policies affirm the board's commitments to making every sure child has access to a safe. Learning environment in Okemos. Be in our our board is is reviewed those in the policy committees or our policy committee members might. Be able to chat in terms of those. But we've worked with our attorneys, our board to make sure our policies comply come compile comply with. State federal law, which they do. And a board is constantly reassessing those as needed as as the landscape changes, so. Additionally, we want to make sure that our families understand that a lot of the public issues right now aren't just limited to. Those that might be of immigrant status. So we have other policies to guide our families in terms of making sure we're keeping our kids safe. Title nine sexual harassment policy, a confidentiality of student information policy. Unlawful discrimination harassment policy, a student's record and directory information policy. So all these are available on our website and we'll be sending out a newsletter, some directions on how to access those policies so our. Community can be engaged and knowledgeable about what those are. Anyone from the policy committee want to comment more on that before I move on to the next topic?
So yeah, just because we've received multiple. Inquiries about this and there's lots of concern from different members in the community. I wanted to make sure that. We try to be as clear as possible to address those. So there's one main policy that really addresses what the concerns have been and it's fifty-two oh one investigations, arrests and other law enforcement. Contact. Section D, non-school-related criminal activity and also section E, taking a student into custody. These are. The top questions that we've received from community members. So in a meeting with our legal team. They did say that they felt very confident about those specific sections answering all of the concerns. So. It specifically says in there about needing a warrant or a court order. And so those are already in place and that's not something other schools have added things to their policies. And that's something that we were told we did not need to add because we already have it in our policies that those things are required. And if you have more questions, I would encourage you to look specifically at fifty-two oh one, section D and section E, because it does address those already. And in addition to those, some other things about privacy are forty-two oh four about confidential confidentiality of student information. And fifty-three oh one, student records and directory information. And again, those are all. Protected under those policies that we do not give those out and it lists all the details there, but. Those policies already do protect the safety of our students in that way. And I just wanted to make sure that was really clear, because. I know sometimes we aren't super specific, but those questions have come up, so I just wanted to make sure that we addressed it.
I was just gonna piggyback off of that and say that my work puts me in contact with a lot of educators across the state and going into. Our last policy committee meeting, I had gotten a lot of information about like what other districts are doing. And after like learning about that and then speaking with superintendent hood and our attorneys, I feel pretty good about where Okemos's policy is in this area.
And then I was just gonna add that the board sets the policy, but then after that, it's the school district that sets the procedures. And so if I could hand it back to you superintendent hood to just touch on that.
Yeah, so. The policy is the what and the procedures are the how and administration's responsible for the how. So we have trained all of our. Front office staff, our principals, all the way down to the teacher level with how we respond to any law enforcement contact with the district. So we have. You know, from scripts to steps that need to be taken in terms of warrants and vetting warrants. Vetting. When a law officer comes in and presents a. Not a warrant, what's the other one? Court order, thank you. So we have processes and procedures for that to make sure that we are complying with. Both board policy and state and federal law. So it's run through that lens. And really pushes the response up to administration to respond. So we're taking that responsibility. Off of our teachers and our office staff and taking that on more as a central office administration and response, so. Just because someone says they come in, doesn't mean they can. There's some legal hurdles that must be gone through first. And just because they've gone through the legal hurdles, doesn't mean our policy still doesn't apply if it is outside of the law. So we have, you know, things in our policies and regarding. If you are to access a student, how can you do it in at least obstructive way to the learning environment? So. We feel pretty positive and uncomfortable with that approach. And our our principals give us really good feedback on feeling like they're empowered to know what they need to do in those situations. Other updates, let's see, learn your management system. So we have a committee looking at evaluating a potential learner management system. As we evolve into digital learning, recognizing the need for an LMS beyond Google Classroom. So a full on LMS like Schoolology or Canvas offers. Features to integrate Power School and other assessments, including data analytics and options for differentiation. So we're evaluating that right now with a committee about adopting more robust LMS to create more efficient engaging and data-driven learning environments for our teachers and students. And then finally, as part of our continuing negotiations from last year, educators are evaluating the educator evaluation tool. A decision will be made this spring to ensure time for implementation for the fall of twenty-five, twenty-six. This came out again as a result of a change in. Legislation, which makes that a negotiated subject, so we could select that tool with our teachers' union. And then the last time we looked at that tool has been a few years, so we know there's some revisions of tools that have come out to want to make sure we're using the best tool for teacher growth. To inform their practice each and every day with kids. And that's all for tonight.
Okay. Questions for superintendent hood?
Okay.
I'd say a question about learner management system. Is that a budget impact or should be aware of that we should be discussing in terms of budget planning?
It will be when budget season comes, yeah.
So that's something we're gonna hear about. Will be a discussion with the board on whether we're implementing.
Correct.
I just wanted to say I'm glad that Okemos already has a policy in precision in place. That we're not doing what everybody else is doing, like reacting, but we are, we already. Have policy in precision in place to. Make sure our students are always the first priority and their safety is the first priority.
Other questions? Okay, we are now going to move on to board reports and requests and we'll start by acknowledging receipt of correspondence. We have obviously Lindsay O'Brien, Kelsey Ellis, Liz Davis, Erin Stockle, Amanda Gaul. And Delane Kamling expressed support for the Edgewood Learning Center and Childcare Programming. Jill Lambert emailed the board regarding facility rentals. Candace Boldry and Rebecca Stoner emailed us regarding the policy and deportation efforts that we just spoke of. And Mario Martinez provided feedback on leadership. Other board reports and requests. Trustee Kavanaugh.
I just wanted to give a little. Give a report on advocacy committee work. Leaning I met with. Representative, was it this week? Last week, last week, so. Today's only Monday. And we've got a meeting this week with with Representative Bricksy. We've got one with Senator Singh and. Senator Anthony too coming up, so. We had our talking points, our points of concern, Cassie's outfit, you guys can see what we were talking to them about. Per pupil allowance, of course. Start times. We offered our support for prevent to protect and as that runs out of funding in a few years, asking them to re. Reissue that funding, a couple of legislative suggestions. So I'm excited that we have more meetings coming and just as I am. Always talking about advocacy, I just want to mention to our audience, to us. Our voices do make a difference when we speak to our legislative officials. And you know, I would add universal childcare when you're making, I make calls every day to my legislators and senators and reps. Tomorrow I'll be adding universal childcare. I mean, that is something that we as a country need and we need. This is a, you know, exactly why. And we had it once during World War Two, we were able to get it together and our country needs to be doing something more for universal childcare. So we don't have these kinds of issues. So I'm imploring everybody, use your voice. I mean, with our administration currently, who thinks your family can just take care of your kids? I don't know if we're gonna get anything there, so let's get, let's get the conversation going. So please advocate for that as you're making calls. And so then we don't have to rely on schools to to do this too, you know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, when?
So. This has a section is for request follow-up on matters of concern, so I just wanted to maybe follow up on. The discussion before about what are like the next steps, like. Did we fully complete that, like? When will, like, I guess what the question is, is like, what are the next steps for that process? For childcare.
Yeah, I, as stated earlier, I just needs. To know some direction from the board in terms of. Maintain programming and look at tuition increases or we'd like to have further discussion about a sunset. And a and a timeline for a sunset. So those are really the two. My presentation tonight said I'd like to try options one, one or two. Or a combination of those as we kind of set in feedback and come back to you with. Check-ins to see if those remain sustainable. So that would be the current administrative recommendation before we. Pull the option to go to option three. So that's where I'm at and the board can certainly, because there could be budget implications directing otherwise. Tracy, stress that.
So yeah, I also was thinking about that. Do we? Do we, being one of the new members, do we decide? As a group, you know, or? How will that decision making go? So Mr. Hood has a clear direction. And then how far do we wait to make that decision as a board? Because time is.
I mean, I think, you know, this question of, you know, what is our lane and, you know, kind of how far we get into the weeds is a really important one to keep in mind. And so I think superintendent hood has heard. From the community through in public comment and emails, he's heard our comments. And so I would expect there to be some next report from him. Is that fair? I guess the question is, do you have enough to move forward with some recommendation based on what you've heard? So to move forward, I would move forward on some hybrid between option one and two with sustainability check-ins for the board community. That would be. That would be the 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 plan. You know, I heard the forty percent might be too much, the twenty percent might be too little, so we try to figure out an in-between there and then come up with. Remove the 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 freeze. And and do reporting out to see if that's a sustainable path. So that's. That's where I'm going ahead unless the board tells me differently.
I just wanted to add to be clear that I agree with Shalan in that I agree forty percent seems too high. I do also like an option that keeps the childcare for the youngest in our community if we can make that work.
And one thing you didn't include in your summary was a commitment to families for a six-month lead, right? Option one and two. There was, yes. And then the only other piece that I think would be important to. And then the only other piece um that I think would be important to carry forward, just speaking as an individual here, would be, you know, just looking at the costs there and seeing if there's something else to do. Yeah, we can certainly dig into that other um other line item uh for transparency for the board and community and break those out for you and see if there's opportunities for savings there as well.
I do also want to say, do have the same concern about the Montessori program as well, about eliminating aftercare. Um and that equity piece, um if we're offering aftercare at all of our elementary schools, um it it's it's a tough piece for me when thinking about equity.
Uh my only pushback on that is I would say that's equality, not equity. And um we're talking about preschool, aftercare, that we only had like four kids in. So to staff that with a full staff member, just again, we gotta look at the feasibility of programming and that's true at any of our sites in terms of if our before and aftercare doesn't have enough kids to support the site, do we look at collapsing sites and busing to a, you know, busing to a similar site. So those are the things you'd have to look at to manage it well um. Um moving into the future, so just some respectful pushback on that.
So yeah, I guess I am curious if there's the plan for not busing next year. I guess I wasn't sure if there was a clear answer, because I know this year they are busing, next year is the plan to have them bus or is it to have them re- stay back at OPM.
So right now, the plan that we're looking at is trying to keep enrichment here instead of instead of busing.
Thank you for that clarity.
Yes. Trustee Daxin.
Okay, so you just said the plan is to and keep to keep enrichment here, but the proposal was to not have enrichment, so um um.
Proposal was not to have aftercare for Edgewood. Enrichment right now is at twenty-four kids, it would be at twenty and turn into a GSRP three-year-old blend for enrichment.
Right, and that's why I asked the question during the presentation, if you're transitioning the enrichment to GSRP families, again, I'll speak selfishly, I would not be able to it uh transition my kid to a GSRP program unless there's no income limit. And so that's still my concern. I understand the before and aftercare if there's only five or six families. That is tough. Um there's no way to try to, you know, explain how to sustain that. I get that. I understand that overall before and aftercare has declined, just again, things have changed with COVID, families work in hybrid and they're able to make it work for their families in terms of that piece. It was the enrichment, which is aftercare or gives you almost a full day of preschool. What I heard in the proposal was transition that to GSRP. And so I just want to be clear on what that proposal, what I, that's what I thought I heard and that well, with the GSRP and the universal, but that's still not guaranteed. So you will have families that may be um utilizing the enrichment right now. And that will leave them with just uh morning preschool for the Montessori. So if that's what I just want that to be clear, if that's what the proposal is.
Christina, do you want to come up and respond to that? Yep. So uh we want clarity on enrichment and before and after enrichment at Montessori with with the GRC, GSRP blended classroom and income limits and who would get in and how would we do, how would we decide who gets into that program and are we, by making a GSRP, are we automatically excluding some from it?
So if we only have one afternoon blended three and four-year-old GSRP classroom, it is accurate that we would not have enough space to fill all of our three and four-year-olds in that program because we only have a capacity of twenty. Um could we explore other options if we had more spaces? We could. Um but at this time, we don't have the answer where enrichment or enrichment slash GSRP, whatever we're going to call it, we're not sure yet. Um we're we're not sure where that's going to be housed, so we don't know other than having one classroom h- how much more children we can obtain. At this time, we are under the understanding that our four-year-olds will be free and they will get in because they are part of our current program and we can have that as a prerequisite. Um for example, all of our hollowed families, income or not, they were our um current families, they were able to transition uh because they were in our current program. We would follow the same thought process with our current three and four-year-olds that are enrolled now in PPK.
And our current program was capped at twenty-four, and when we had more than twenty-four interested, we did a lottery, correct?
Correct.
So that would be the same for if we had more than twenty interested, we'd have to do a lottery.
We would have to do a lottery.
So it's not a change in practice.
Correct. The only, and you know, the only difference is um the size of the classroom and how many uh we could take. Does that help answer your question?
To an extent. Again, I I get having one classroom and the maximum size, my biggest thing is the income. If if you are, if the guarantee is that families that are currently in enrichment, regardless of income, can transition to this blended GSRP classroom, then you're still providing the option that they need or that that uh the support that they need for their families, so.
That was our understanding.
That is our understanding, correct.
I have a report um from the executive uh team. Um we had uh discussed as a board a concern about administrative turnover and made a decision to um move forward with a three hundred and sixty evaluation um to help the growth and development of our sole employee and also the the school district. Um and we had actually have a a contract now with uh Dr. Rod Green. He's a retired superintendent. We came to him through the Michigan Association of School Boards. And um the executive team will be meeting with him on March fourth to kind of fine tune our kind of focus. And I distributed some kind of draft questions to trustees earlier, and I'd just like that feedback by this Wednesday, please.
Oh, I just want to put in the space, I'm looking forward to that. So thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Questions, yes?
I just want to go back to uh trustee Doxy's comment about enrichment. I know we keep on going, you know, in circles sometime. Um so to clarify, three-year-olds, if they are in that after-school enrichment, whatever we're going to call it, after um the Montessori, morning Montessori, three-year-olds will have to pay while four-year-olds might be tuition-free through GSRP, correct?
That's a bl- a blended classroom does that, yes.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say um your confidence in your staff to achieve seventy-five percent with option one, I have that confidence too, and I really hope we consider that option um because if a family doesn't have childcare, I mean, yes, we are here for K through twelve, but we are here right now to making this decision or discussing this. Um it can have so many ripple effects if a family has, if a parent has to stay home because they don't have childcare and everybody doesn't come from a family that can afford
Yep.
has the social capacity to call somebody else.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other reports and requests for Superintendent Hood?
Okay, seen done uh with, we're now uh onto action items. And within the action items, there's a consent agenda expedite the business of the board, which groups a number of items together to be dealt with by one action of the board. However, items in the consent agenda may be extracted by individual board member requests for further discussion. May I have a motion, please?
Move that the board approve items one through four for immediate implementation and appropriate action. Item one, approval of the minutes as a regular meeting of February tenth, twenty twenty-five. Item two, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting of February tenth, twenty twenty-five. Item three, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. And item four, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting of February eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
Support.
Sorry, who supported that? Supported, okay, a move by trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Doxy. Uh all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed? Okay, uh next up, we have some other actions. Um we have the M A S B election. Uh we have received information um about um the election at the Michigan Association of School Boards. I believe there were two candidates for region seven. Um and we have to decide who we would like to select. So this is a chance to make a motion. I think last time we talked about um trustee Martinez Lopez, Guillermo Lopez, yes, excuse me.
I'm willing to make a motion. I move that the board select Guillermo Lopez as the region seven candidate of its choice to complete the election ballot for members of the twenty twenty-five Board of Directors of the Michigan Association of School Boards.
Moved by um trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. Um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Um next up, we have uh the, we discussed at the last board meeting, uh the twenty twenty-two bond purchases. Okay, do you have anything to, I mean, no, we talked about it in our last meeting. Okay, could I have a motion, please?
I move that the board award contracts not to exceed three million one hundred and four thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars for the trade contractors listed below and assign those contracts to the Christmas company pursuant to the construction manager's construction pro- sorry, constructor project delivery method. LD Clark Company, Proline Concrete Construction, Davenport Masonry Incorporated, Custom Steel Fabricators LLC, CNI Building Maintenance Incorporated, Air and Glass Company Incorporated, Moore Trosper Construction Incorporated, Grand River Interiors and Plaster LLC, Integrity Interiors Incorporated, H and H Painting Company Incorporated, Brigade Fire Protection, Applegate, uh sorry, Applegate Incorporated, Meyer Electric Incorporated, and the Bowler Companies Incorporated.
Support.
Sorry, again, my lateral hearing here. Um I will say that it was great to see this bid package come in so much below the expected amount over, it was one point five million dollars less. Um so um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, seven oh. Um and next up, we have, I know, reading of a board policy. Hey, can I have a motion, please?
It starts on the bottom of, bottom of that second page, it starts on, so.
Okay, that the board waived the reading and at that final reading of board policies, thirty-one oh two, smoking, tobacco products, drugs and alcohol, thirty-one oh six, booster clubs, PTOs and other support groups, thirty-one nineteen, experimental or pilot programs, thirty-two oh seven, school activities fund, thirty-two eleven, post issuance tax compliance. Thirty-three oh one, purchasing and procurement, thirty-three oh six, construction bidding, thirty-three oh seven, construction administration, thirty-four oh eight, firearms and weapons, thirty-four ten, opiate a- antagonist, forty-one oh one, non-discrimination, forty-one oh five, disability workplace accommodations for employees and applicants, forty-one oh five A, pregnancy workplace accommodations for employees and applicants, forty-one oh five B, religious workplace accommodations for employees and applicants, forty-one oh six, Family and Medical Leave Act, FMLA, forty-one oh seven, military leave, forty-one oh nine, break time for nursing mothers, forty-two oh one, employee ethics and standards, forty-two oh two, children's protective services, CPS, and adult protective services, APS, reporting and student safety welfare, forty-two oh six, employment contracts, forty-two oh seven, third-party contracting, forty-two fifteen, district technology and acceptable use policy, forty-two twenty-eight, no e- expectation of privacy, forty-two twenty-nine, acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence, forty-four oh zero one, definition, forty-five oh seven, termination, forty-six oh three, performance evaluation, fifty-one oh three, search and seize seizure, fifty-one oh five, collaboration with outside entities, fifty-two oh two, unlawful discrimination, harassment and retaliation against students, fifty-two oh three, hazing, fifty-two oh four, student appearance and dress code, fifty-two oh six, student discipline, fifty-two oh six A, student discipline, due process, fifty-two oh six B, student discipline, students with disabilities, fifty-two oh six D, student discipline, enrollment following misconduct at another public or non-public school, fifty-two oh eight, student acceptable use and internet safety, fifty-two oh eight dot oh one, acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence, fifty-two twelve, registered sex offenders, students, fifty-three oh one, compulsory attendance, absenteeism, intruency, fifty-three oh three, student enrollment and withdrawal, fifty-three oh four, non-public school students, part-time attendance, fifty-four sixteen, homebound and hospitalized instruction, fifty-five oh six, field trips, fifty-five ten, student-initiated non-curricular clubs, fifty-six oh one, special education, fifty-seven oh one, abuse and neglect, fifty-seven eleven, toilet training, fifty-seven thirteen, immunizations and communicable diseases, fifty-eight oh four, work permits, support.
Moved by trustee Nguyen, uh supported by trustee Doxy. Anything from the policy committee in terms of framing, anything that stood out? I know this is an adoption of the Thrun policies, but.
Yeah, so we met as a policy committee and also met with uh representatives from Thrun with some of the questions that we had. And there wasn't anything that I think should get in the way of us adopting the policies that are written right now, but we may recommend some revisions in the future.
Okay.
Great. Um all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, seven oh. Okay, discussions, we have no discussion items. Okay, and the um next is time uh for comments from the public at this time in the meeting. Since we have an opportunity to address the board regarding any items of interest, individual comments at this time will be limited to three minutes, but may be extended to discussion of the board president. A designated timekeeper will communicate to the individuals who is addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment. However, our meeting format uh does not allow the board to engage in conversation with speakers. Questions or concerns may be assigned for follow-up by the board or administration at a later date. And uh first up, we have Dan Peepity.
Peepy all the time, maybe you're East Coast or something, but my name's Daniel Peabody. I live at uh four, four, five, four, Satinwood Drive. This is a little bit back in time because I submitted my card late, so I apologize, but I appreciate the moment. So I heard earlier that the last time the programs we were talking about were profitable was in the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen timeframe. Interestingly, this timeframe also marks the start of the current superintendent's career in the Oakhamus Public Schools. How does one not simply notice that the program has been mismanaged under the current administration when the numbers clearly show that the program was very profitable prior to the current superintendent taking over the district? Similar programs are run by other districts like Holt. So obviously, this is a model that can be successful if it is properly managed. Why should the public be confident in our current leadership when it is obvious that you are not equipped to manage these types of programs? The spreadsheets show that these programs are not being responsibly managed, yet they're significantly smaller than the bond you've been put in charge of and are actively managing. Why, which is nearly a quarter of a billion dollars? Why should we have confidence in your management of such a large, important budget like that when the record has shown you've not been able to responsibly manage much smaller pots of money with less risk? I believe the community is here tonight because we are questioning your leadership and decision-making while also showing that we support staff and deeply care for the faculty that work in these programs and because we value having childcare in our district. No one is questioning the leadership of your staff or program managers like Christine or the previous manager in that role. But people are here, some silently and some openly, questioning the leadership of our administration and superintendent. From my perspective, your solutions are short-sighted and very limited, proposing to eliminate programs altogether or really pushing significant tuition increases. And all of them are focused on cuts to Edgewood in the early childhood curriculum in order to offset budget issues that appear to be a much larger problem. Your spreadsheets show that you have comparable losses in other programs too, including the Montessori program, which is on par with the losses at Edgewood. It is not as though these budget issues came up overnight as others have said. Some of the revenue losses, such as the loss of rental money from fields while buildings are under construction, should have been something that was forecasted when the bond was being pushed and planning should have began then to offset those costs, or you should have expected a significant decrease in revenue for a several-year period. The superintendent, as a civil servant, is supposed to be accountable to the board and public, and that accountability began when you took this position. It did not begin tonight. The board's job is to provide oversight of the superintendent. I urge the board to hold staff accountable for their performance and do it in a transparent way. I appreciate the board providing service to the community and filling this role. For budget solutions, you need to look holistically for real solutions such as releasing, reusing, or selling vacant properties, filling the two empty rooms that already exist in a fee-based program, increasing enrollment in before-aftercare programs, or looking for other ways to address broad budget issues. It's disturbing to hear that you are now saying that the district isn't growing, since one of the major pushes for the bond was the forecasted growth of the district. I've commented on this issue several times, but real- I've commented on this issue several times, but real growth models are needed to forecast growth in our district so we can make future budget projections using real data beyond what anyone has done to date. I just want to thank everybody for staying late in your time, appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you. Liam, is it, Barry?
Yeah, I'm in forty-five, thirty-five Seneca Drive, around time, listening to first time cards. No, that's a joke, I've never been to one before in my life. I, I am, and it's filing stand-up comedian, and I did give up my seven minutes at max tonight to, you know, be doing three minutes here, so that's how important early childcare development is, and yeah, I mean, I don't envy any of you sitting up here, except for John Hood, because that two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar-a-year salary does seem pretty significant. And from what I've heard, he's not earning it, because he is failing at many things which, you know, the speaker pointed out too, yeah, I, I, you know, I worked in private sector for twenty years. And, 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 yeah, board meetings there go a little differently than board meetings here. I, you know, expected there to be a little bit of a difference, but it is drastically different. And, and, and I think that the solution, yeah, to just kind of eliminate these programs or raise tuition is, is, is very short-sighted. And there is a much bigger problem that needs to be addressed here, that, that problem, you know, is a budget problem, and I'm, I'm, you know, sure that, you know, these meetings are not well-attended most of the year. And so maybe it's great that, you know, you do have an audience around for some of the budgeting things, because I did see, I saw like a three-hundred-thousand-dollar insurance cost is going up sixteen percent in, in some of that budget discussion. I don't know what the heck was going on there, but that just seems insane, right? I don't, I hate insurance for multiple reasons, I, I, I guess I, I I, I, I spent a lot of time in sales, right, I've, I've, I've done a lot of selling, I'm really good at selling things, I'm really good at buying things too. Message that you're trying to sell me, I'm not buying, it's, it's a load of crap. And, 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 yeah, there's just, there's, there's solutions here, and there's a lot of intelligent people, you know, in the community that care about this program, and if we put our heads together, I'm sure we can, you know, suggest solutions that, you know, I, I, the fact that, you know, John had five weeks or whatever to come up with these three, quite frankly, all very shitty solutions, just like, I, you know, I, I, I think five of us parents probably could have, you know, come up with a little bit better of options, but.
Thank you, Julian Lambert.
Hi, I'm Julian Lambert, I live at four, two, eight, eight Arbor Drive. I just wanted to bring up the point that there's a lot of unused space at Edgewood that you may or may not be familiar with if you've never been in the building. Like, we do have a library that's kind of an open space that could easily have walls added to add additional classroom. There's also the area down by the floors that could have walls added to add additional classrooms. They have a large lunchroom. Yes, it's used for lunch, but you could add a wall, add a classroom, still have a lunchroom. You could have staggered lunchtime still, just like they do in elementary. So there is building space there too that is being underutilized. There's also the large lobby area. It is nice that the children do have that additional space to use at other times, but at the same time, you need more credit, like, creative ideas around some of these problems. I do feel that the uncertainty with some of the numbers is true and apparent, and I do agree with some of the points that have been brought up about the budget being an issue for years, and it is not just at Edgewood, it's at other areas, and it's going to continue to be a problem, first it's Edgewood. And, I mean, it probably all started a bit with COVID, but the way things are looking is going to get worse possibly, and maybe not better. When you're asking for bond money, maybe you should have asked, you know, there, there was at that time money that the state was putting out to open additional childcare centers and things too. It is a childcare desert. This is a disservice to parents. It does put a bad taste in your mouth when you look at taking away from a program from the parents in the district. It makes you feel worse about, like, the district in general and the programming and services being pulled away. Because they do help support families who have been in Oconomist, like myself. And I really do think there's some opportunity to get some partners in the area. If it's bringing in other programs that could help subsidize that funding, then great. If it's advertising you have building space more too, as the parents said, we're happy to help. Please don't leave this discussion and not engage the parents with trying to figure out creative ways. Because we're happy to help, and it's free labor. So I just want to leave that out there, thank you.
Thank you. And the last person is Luke Bowman.
Luke Bowman, six, seven, four, four, in the Shell Drive. I think a fun goal for you guys should be to have an empty parking lot, because actually, when you're out in the community and people ask you what's new, and you tell them that, oh, I thought there was something going on, there was a lot of cars when I went by. So keep the board meeting attendance next to nothing, and you guys are doing a good job. But I think if you've heard everyone speak and seen comparison data on best practices, this doesn't appear to be a revenue problem, but an expense problem. So I hope we dive into the numbers, because we're going to be at the hundred percentile of cost, if, even with a twenty percent raise compared to the services that we're getting. Like I said before, when you talk about lunches are provided at other facilities, diapers are provided, wipes are provided. That easily adds up to a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a month. I'm still just baffled because all the indirect costs that were up there previously are direct costs for for-profit centers. They have to pay for payroll processing, they have mortgages, they have property taxes, they have a back office, they have HR, whether a local facility or a conglomerate. So I think we really need to look at that, and, and they're not renting out gyms, and they're not renting out fields, and they're not renting out other spaces. They're in it to make money and to be profitable, so I know we can too, so I would challenge the board and challenge you, John, to figure that out as well. On the topic of the district's budget and, and revenue, the bond packages and expenses that were just approved, there's a lot of districts that don't get the support of the community saying yes, and yes, and yes, to bond after bond after bond. When the refrigeration breaks, that's coming out of their general fund. When they need new serving line equipment, that's coming out of their general fund. So again, I think we got an expense issue across the board where our wish list is, is very high. There, you know, take, take a Podunk District an hour north of Grand Rapids. They're not buying new equipment for the kitchen at the back. That's coming out of the general fund budget, they're not as fortunate. And it's a sad state of reality, so just be mindful during this budget process that a lot of districts are in worse shape. And we have to keep in mind the core competencies as well, so every, you know, a learning management system, my question would be, how much can we expect test scores to improve by that? How can we expect graduation rates? How can we expect kids able to pick the phone up in a class, in a workplace, and be comfortable calling somebody and not just sitting behind the computer chatting? How, how is that preparing somebody better for the workplace and for post-high school life? So keep those things in mind too going forward, thank you.
Thank you. We have Keisha Miller. Keisha Miller? Keisha. Keisha, sorry.
Oh, my name is Keisha Miller, and I'm the director at SoFi National Care at Cornell. And I wanted everyone to also know and think about the ideas of the way that it would affect school age and middle school too, because many of those families that are coming over to Edgewood see us there doing our office hours because none of us have offices at our schools. So we're there, we get to know the kids, and those kids are the ones that continue to go through our programs and then continue to sign up for summer camp, continue to sign up for break days and those type of things. And then those kids are the majority of the ones that come back to us as high schoolers, asking to work and asking for hours, asking to volunteer, because they grew up in that community. And if we are talking about eliminating programs without at least the information being spread on to or given to parents, that might also lead them to maybe not want to bring their kids for our school-age summer camp or sign up for all the weeks, maybe just a few weeks, because now they're not just doing one drop-off and pickup, they're doing multiple. So it can affect us also in many ways too, and all the way through, and part of the community with this program is that I do get to come in and do my office hours and meet kids at two, three years old that know my name and are the first kids to sign up on the first day of before and after care on a half-day. I have little kindergartners that would have been terrified that are like, oh, I've known Miss Keisha for two, three, four years before I pass them on over to the middle school program. So that's something to take into consideration because it can also affect the whole thing as a whole, so that's all.
Thank you. And Rebecca Mercado-Jones?
My name is Rebecca Mercado-Jones, I live at ten fifty-one Nautical Drive. I know we've been here for a very long time, but I would like to encourage the board to say something definitive to reduce the uncertainty of all of these parents and all of these workers who are here today. There's, for, for us to leave here without having any kind of continuity of care for our kids or any level of certainty is, is really disappointing. So I would like to encourage you all, before you leave today, to say something definitive to the workers, to the parents here who have showed up to these meetings to advocate for the program, thank you.
We have heard a lot, we have talked a lot, and I think we will move forward with that, you know, information in our hearts and minds.
Check online, is someone checking online? Okay.
Nathan, is there anyone online? No, I'm sorry, thank you. Can I just summarize what I think my next step's, so I think I heard a will of the board for me to investigate a hybrid between option one and two, understanding the feedback that, that targeted approach of the forty percent is too hefty at the, at the lowest level. And then in addition, to break down other parts of that budget for comparison, especially that other that other line item that we talked about that increased by a hundred thousand, can't remember the name right now, to do a comparison between that, administrative summer costs, other programs, to see if there's other opportunities for potential savings there as well, so that's future work to be done. So we would be effective immediately trying to raise class, class sizes to maximums. We would work on a tuition increase plan to roll out this spring for an effective date of July one. And then we would come back with potential other savings of other areas of the budget as discussed. Trustee Doxy?
The other thing I heard tonight is, in that process, is still continue to engage with the families and input from them in terms of additional solutions and opportunities.
And I'll just add, the other thing I heard again was the six-month commitment, and also, you know, before and after care was obviously another topic of conversation. And the check-ins that we talked about, yes. Okay. Any other matters? Okay, at ten twenty-nine, you are joined, adjourned.